Okay, good morning, everyone. November 1st, 2017, meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being recorded, video-recorded, as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, enter closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit at the back of the chambers. Going out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk up front. Cards are available online. The clerk's office are at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward and see our city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, be sure to have your ticket validated by our security officers when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise this morning for the invocation given by Rabbi Avi Anderson, Young Israel Asia Las Vegas, and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. Almighty God, you care deeply about each and every individual. You understand the needs of our city and the unprecedented challenges that we are facing. We thank you for enabling us in our beloved city to incorporate your divine blueprint and to provide a model of the American ideals of democracy and freedom. Indeed, we are a city that unites and grows even stronger in response to tragedy. Eternal God, as the City Council convenes, we pray for your inspiration, empower us to use our experiences of the past to build Las Vegas of the future. Allow tourists to continue to embrace and to enhance the beauty and the diversity of our city. Help us to live in security with peace and serenity. In the words of King David in Psalms, "Gom ki elich begait salma ves lo i ra'ra ki atai madi." Though I walk in the valley overshadowed by death, I will fear no evil, for you are with me. And so, dear God, we pray for all of those who are dedicated to helping and healing our city and who elevate our city to serve as a model for our country and indeed for the entire world. May God bless and protect all of you, and let us say, "Amen."
(Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all." And we will proceed with our ceremonial. (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all." (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.)
Good morning, everyone. Don't go so far away. This is our ceremonial portion of the agenda, and we have a very short ceremonial portion today because, of course, as you recall, at our last meeting, we were so heavily inundated with the pain and suffering of our community, and not that it's any lighter, but we are moving forward, and now we see in New York City an issue they have in these single attacks of crazed people. It's just something, unfortunately, it's generational, and we're just going to have to deal with it, and I did send off an email to Mayor de Blasio of New York City extending the sympathy and prayers from the city of Las Vegas. So, without further ado, I want to turn this over to Mayor Pro Tem Lois Tarkanian, who is going to be doing something wonderful.
We're going to honor someone today as our citizen, special citizen. You know, often we bemoan what's happening in the world. We don't seem to have much power to influence what's happening at levels throughout all the countries. We think there's not much we can do to make positive changes and to maybe affect our top leadership in our country and in other countries. However, there are some individuals who believe that even if that may be so, to some extent, they can do better, and they will find ways in their small corner of the universe to make significant positive contributions to better the world for others in that small place in the world. And Hal Goldblatt is one of those individuals who has worked tirelessly throughout his life to make those significant changes wherever he is, and I'm going to ask Hal and his wife to come up here now so we can honor you.[616.38][616.38](Applause) Yes. You turn, and we can face the audience. And on a professional level, Mr. Goldblatt has worked in the field of accounting. He has held various positions, including controller and CFO of many major construction companies in Southern Nevada, including the Fountain Blue, Cosmopolitan Hotel and Casino, Terminal D at the airport, and Rhodes Homes. He has been recognized for his abilities by the Timberland User Group, which is the industry standard program. He also has served on the boards of directors of two corporations as their treasurer, and so far, he's managed to do a very excellent job in all of those. Currently, Mr. Goldblatt volunteers as a director of security for Habad of Southern Nevada and Desert Torah Academy, which is in Ward 1, and we're very proud to have them there, and they have done significant improvements in how the community looks, how the community acts, and how we can all work together, all of us, in our small corner of the universe. He works with various law enforcement agencies through the Southern Nevada Counterterrorism Center and stands guard at the Habad of Southern Nevada synagogue each Sabbath and holidays. He has received training, given the time for that, through the FBI, Homeland Security, and ADL. He also has other abilities. As a freelance photographer, his photographs have been published in hundreds of newspapers, magazines, specialty pamphlets, and seven books around the world. His photos were displayed in photographic exhibits at the various branches of the Clark County Library District for over two years, and he volunteers as the official photographer for Habad of Southern Nevada, and his photographs are on display at the synagogue. Hal and his wife, Sean, served on the board of directors for the Actors Repertory Theater at the time when it was the only equity actors troupe in Southern Nevada. That took a lot of work to get things going, and look at where it is now. It shows how much your efforts have helped them. The Goldblatts are active supporters of the Smith Center for the Performing Arts, and he has been a leader for the National Mental Health Organization for 30 years and has served as a district leader in the past. He led a weekly self-help group for the organization. He also serves as a lay leader for his synagogue, and he has guest lectured in economics and religious topics both nationally and locally. He's been recognized for many awards for his academic and community service, including being listed in Who's Who in America, and that's a pretty strong background for you, very strong. One thing he's really been helpful with is when the Habad moved into the area, there were people who questioned, "Should we have a school there? Is this the direction we should go?" And so, there were different questions that came up, and we even had a few little other problems that occurred, but it's through his leadership, his willingness to give his time, his wanting to help all the people who live in that area, that we quickly, quickly were able to solve those problems. And so, with great pride, Ward 1 is very happy to have Mr. Hal Goldblatt receive our Citizen of the Month this month of November.[856.44][856.44](Applause) Yes. Now, this is what you have here. However, we have something else over there, and that's going to have your name upright outside our building that says "Your Citizen of the Month," so everybody who drives by this month will see your name and know all that you've contributed to us. And I think maybe it'd be nice if we could have you say a few words and then take a picture over there so you can show everybody what a great citizen you are.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this honor. Per Cheavas, the ethics of fathers, says that "In a place where there are no men, strive to be a man." And I've tried to live that, those words, all my life. Wherever we've seen any action that needed, we lived in Long Beach, California for 18 years of our married life, and we did the same there. Wherever we saw a need, we stepped up and did whatever we could. When we moved to Las Vegas shortly after the Rodney King riots, we were the third Habad family here, and again, where we saw a need, we stepped up. Rabbi Harlick sometimes was not always agreeable to some of our suggestions, but in the end, he saw the wisdom of it. So, now, 25 years later, thank God, we've been able to help build a beautiful Jewish community in Ward 1. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And let's, and by the way, it is beautiful. Please come by and see it sometime and see the beautiful school. Many donations are throughout the valley. It's beautiful. And to see the students so well-mannered and so willing to give to the community, that's important. And we haven't heard of any riots at your school?
Yep.
We haven't heard of any shootings or anything like that? So, we're very proud of all that you've accomplished.
Not on my watch.
Not on his watch. So, we'll take that picture over there. We'll have you stand by this side, and your wife can stand too. I thought, which would you prefer? You want to be next to him or on the other side? Oh, no arguments today, no. (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) And you see what it says here? "Your Citizen of the Month."
Just part of your, congratulations.
So, they know a great credit.
Very, very cool.
You didn't mention the graffiti thing. Oh, that was given to me. You've been getting rid of all the graffiti there too?
Yes.
He does it himself. Thank you so, so much. Thank you for all that. Thank you. How many children? 28. 28. And then, there's the 250-plus kids in school that are all.
I know you would claim them, of course. Thank you for all that you do. Okay, so that will conclude our ceremonial portion today, and we will go into the agenda. I have 20 of, we'll give some more time for technology to keep up with us, so give us five minutes, and we'll go right into the meeting.
(Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.) (Clerk, in the background, saying, "Pledge of allegiance, it is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, number one, indivisible, and liberated in justice for all.)
2016. So, we're asking for the ability to have more than 60 seconds input, which is all we get at the council meetings when you guys actually make your votes. So, that's what we're requesting. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on any other item, please come forward, state your name for the record. Okay, I'm going to close public comment, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Seven. For possible action, any items that the council staff and/or rep can wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Yes. We have before, to be considered today, Item 48, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Review of the Suspension and to Approve or Deny the Permanent Beer Wine Cooler On-Sale License for Herbst Richardson Downtown WC LLC, Doing Business as White Castle Downtown at 107 North Fourth Street, and the action is requested by the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. We also have Items 60 to 63, GPA 70722, ZON 70723, VAR 70724, SUP 70725, Public Hearings, Applicant Nancy Crowe, Owner H Factor Limited Partnership at 6050 West Sloan Mountain Road, and this will be an abeyance to January 3, 2018, and it was requested by the applicant, and this is my motion to approve these two.
Thank you very much. There are the motions that were read by Mayor Protem. Please vote and please post. Sorry. It's coming. I am voting nay, just because of the cards. It should come through. Here we go. And please post, thanks. Motion carries, thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, For Possible Action, To Approve Them at Final Minutes By Reference To The October 4, 2017 Regular City Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. It's a motion to approve, please vote, and then please post. Motion carries. Move on to Agenda Item Nine. Whoops. Items nine through 42, On the Consent Agenda Are Considered To Be Routine or Recommended For Approval By The Departments May Be Enacted In One Motion. Note Two Corrections For The Record Regarding Item 29, Which Currently Reads As Being In Ward Six With Councilwoman Fiore, But Is Actually Located In Ward Two With Councilwoman Soroka. Also Regarding Item 41, Which Currently Reads As Being In Ward Three With Councilman Coffin, It's Actually In Ward One With Councilwoman Tarkanium. Are There Any Consent Items The Council Wishes To Bring Forward? Okay, may I have a motion, Madam?
Move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. So, we'll move on to Agenda Item, I've got too much stuff here. Forty-three. Presentation by our City Manager, Scott D. Adams, Regarding An Update On The Status Of His Hundred-Day Plan. Has it been a hundred days already? We're having such a long time.
Good morning. Scott Adams, you're City Manager, and depending on how you look at a hundred days, it was either the middle of October or just a matter of a couple days ago. If you remember, and two of you were not part of this process, but the rest of you were, as I applied for and went through your selection process for City Manager, I presented you a hundred-day plan. And that wasn't done just as window dressing to get the job. I really took that seriously, I thought about it very seriously, and it was a plan that I believed if we accomplished a lot of the things in that plan, would move the needle of this city and make it a much greater city. And you hired a City Manager that believes in a very important axiom, I believe, which is, this is an old saying that I have, that you plan your work and then work your plan. And so, this is my plan, this was my plan for my work in that first hundred days. And so, I laid out six objectives. The reorganization of our City Manager's Office, I first had to get our team in place and get them working together. Developing An Enhanced Strategic Vision. Returning To And Expanding Our Neighborhood Development Program. Maintaining Our Momentum Of Downtown Redevelopment. Building New Frontiers And Economic Development. And Continuing Our Efforts In Succession Planning And Training. So, I'll go into each of these a little bit. First of all, On The Reorganization Of The Manager's Offices, I laid this out, I said we would work on stronger facilitation and tracking of City Council Action Requests. Do More Extensive Internal Communication Among The Team With Department Directors And Increase Internal Policy Communications. So, here's what we've done. The team's in place, I think I've, you know who they are, they're a fantastic team, and I think I, this is a great time for me to thank that team and the broader executive team of the city for helping me in getting this hundred-day plan moving forward. I'm just the Symphony Director, they're the Symphony, they're the ones that are getting the job done. I just hold the baton. So, the other piece is, we've just completed an executive retreat where we've spent some time together recommitting ourselves as a team to organizational health, and I think, as I briefed you yesterday, we've even reestablished and reconfirmed new city values, those being kind, committed, and smart. I would say this hundred-day plan is a good example of the value of committed, because what I'm saying here is, I put in place a hundred-day plan, and I'm following that hundred-day plan through as a commitment to you, as your new City Manager. And I don't believe I could espouse values to our employees such as committed unless I walk that talk myself as your City Manager. So, that's, and I, but I really have to thank our entire city team in helping move the needle on this plan and really making some progress on all, each of the facets of it. We've created a better organized online policy library. I think one of the issues we've had is a challenge, is every time we hire somebody in as a city employee, they're not aware of all the different policies and procedures they have to follow as a city employee. We have it all organized in a central place. And so, now you know where to go, you know what you can do and what you can't do. And we're still working on action item tracking. That's something, that's a big challenge, I will tell you, it's been a challenge in every city I've worked in, but that doesn't mean we're going to give up on it, we're going to stay the course in doing a better job of tracking action items, especially those that come from U.S. Council members. I'm not going to blabber on this, this is that team that I, that I put in place, it's working very well, and I think it's going to serve us very well moving forward and moving this plan forward, and as well as many plans going forward in the future. An Enhanced Strategic Vision. I said I would visit with each council member to identify your top priorities. I'd build from the city by design to create a more comprehensive citywide strategic plan and integrate your priorities with that strategic vision. And I've already met with each of you, we've organized those priorities that you've communicated to me, we're folding that into a process that we're going to be working together on, we've briefed you on this, that over the next several months, we'll be working through a process to have you better define a new enhanced strategic vision, it's broader, more comprehensive than the three priorities that we've been working under for the last three to five years. This one is very near and dear to me. I said I would return to and expand neighborhood development. And I guess maybe this goes way back in my, my career, and one of the first jobs I started in right out of college was in neighborhood development, so it's something I felt very strongly about. But I, I think what I said to you was, we're a rapidly growing metro area, and as a city, we are the urban core city of that rapidly growing metro area, and we have neighborhoods in our city that are at risk. And if we don't address those at-risk neighborhoods, they'll continue to slide, and I don't want to see those at-risk neighborhoods take the whole city with it. I, and I don't throw any darts at any other city, but I don't want to be another Detroit where they're now farming on the vacant land in their urban core. They have so much vacant land because their urban core downsized so dramatically. So, the whole idea is to keep that from happening. So, there were a whole number of things I said we would look at doing under here in terms of integrating with our long-range planning, integrating neighborhood issues with this new strategic vision, integrating with the action tracking, focusing on neighborhoods at risk, and then looking at a capital improvement program for a neighborhood. So, the results to date is, we've got a whole team now working together. You saw a first piece of it this morning at the RDA, where we've now put in place a residential rehab program that's multifamily, and that's very important, because for the first time in the time that I've worked for the city, we're reinvesting RDA dollars into neighborhoods on residential projects. That's profound, because we've heretofore pretty much relegated RDA investment to commercial development. And that is an important policy shift to move us to the direction of starting to focus on at-risk neighborhoods. So, there are other things we're looking at, though, vacant building and abandoned properties program, a neighborhood grant program, and then setting this up as a virtual online program that can be accessed by our neighborhoods and the active members in neighborhoods, so they can get engaged with the city on all these initiatives. With next steps being, looking at how we can expand this to new neighborhoods, developing community partnerships, so we're not going alone on this, and then also looking at creating a funding sources and uses matrix, and how we can make it a sustainable program. Not being done with just one-time money, but keeping, keeping it going year in and year out, so we can sustain the program. We think we'll have something to you on this for briefing and approvals right after the first of the year. So, this is moving down the road very well, we're using data and analytics to drive what those at-risk neighborhoods are and what we should be focusing on. Maintaining The Momentum Of Downtown Redevelopment. The concept here was, we've invested heavily in downtown, we are now starting to get serious returns on that investment, and it isn't the time to pull the rug out from under that and say we're done, because we are ready to go to that next level. So, it's, I said, let's keep the focus on downtown plan implementation. We did our plan, now let's work that plan, continue our efforts in the medical district, because that is a major component of what we're doing. More downtown housing, more parks and open space. We didn't say we needed more downtown parks and open space, the staff of the city, our citizens told us they wanted more downtown parks and open space. That was one of the biggest resonating things that came out of the master planning process. And then, continue our commitments to Symphony Park and Cashman as sites for catalytic investments in healthcare, housing, and sports. So, the results to date is, we briefed you recently, within the last couple of weeks, on a downtown investment plan that embraces all of these objectives, and invests in each of these components going forward over the next three to five years, where I am very confident we'll be bringing to you very soon a couple housing projects on Symphony Park. We've been vetting out a number of major developers who want to build housing downtown on Symphony Park, and as you know, we're working real hard to get those, that property back, back in our control, so we can get back out with getting real developers with real projects that we can start breaking ground on. We've offered Cashman as an Amazon option. We're in the game with Cashman, or in Amazon, but with Cashman, I mean, I know there's been a lot about the Cashman proposal that we can't talk about, but we can say that's, that's what we've thrown out there. But we're, here's the important thing with Cashman, it's always been a problem finding somebody interested in Cashman as long as there was a long-term lease with the 51s. Nobody could figure that one out. With the announcement of the 51s going to a new stadium, we now can move forward with firm commitments at Cashman Center. And to a redeveloper who might have interest in investing in Cashman, they now know that issue's been resolved, they can move forward knowing that the site will be fully available. New Frontiers In Economic Development. This first one, Make The Northwest Business Park A Reality. This has been a bit of a pet project of mine, I feel strongly, we've got to get back in the business park game. We've been out of the business park game for over a decade. The business parks, the city-developed spectrum, the tech center, and even Enterprise Park are virtually built out, and we need more real estate to be active in the economic development game and attracting new business and industry. We could reposition downtown for conventions and meetings. Cashman Center was built at the wrong location, it wasn't walkable to the hotel base downtown. We can start looking at how to locate convention space closer to the hotel base, make it work as a true convention center. And then, I've added one. The former City Manager did a fantastic job defining an innovation district, and we can't let that go. We are now nationally recognized as a leader in smart city infrastructure due to our innovation district, and we've got to stay the course on that, because that will be economic development. We have companies interested in experimentation, research and development on smart city infrastructure. I think it can lead to permanent investments by those companies in our city, so we've got to stay the course on that. So, the results to date are, we finalized that plan for the Northwest Business Park, and further, we've made the request of our federal delegation to transfer that property without restriction to the city. We want to stay the course on that request, because if we can get full title of that property without restriction, we can make that a reality. We're working with the World Market Center and others on market feasibility studies for evaluating convention space, and we have been working many strategic partnerships with many technology companies in the innovation district. The tech community nationally is responding to what we're doing in the innovation district, and that's something we want to continue moving forward with. And then, finally, and this is last but certainly not least, continued succession planning and training. We are facing a silver tsunami, and we are not alone in that. Thirty percent of our workforce will be eligible to retire in the next five years. That's 1,000 employees. And we have to stay competitive in attracting talented workforce, building our bench strength, and making sure we stay a competitive city, because we're not alone in it. Every jurisdiction in southern Nevada is facing the silver tsunami, every private sector company is facing the silver tsunami. There will be a big fight for quality labor force, and we need to be an employer of choice, not the employer of last place. And so, a number of things, this is why we've made this our thematic goal for the next six to 12 months. We will have complete a three-year plan for how we can improve organizational training and development, so that we can identify all of the training needs, all the cross-training needs, and how we can get all that information that's stored in the brains of persons who may be on that retirement bubble out before they go out the door. So, this is very important, probably should be number one on the list, which is why it's this thematic goal. We can't let this at-risk situation take us down in the next three to five years. So, with that, those are, those are the six prongs of that hundred-day plan, I, I take them very seriously. I take them very seriously, and my intent is to see them through to conclusion. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Adams. I think it's just been wonderful and exciting time already. We're seeing it. I know you've got more plans that are out there, and it's just really been grand. So these 100 days, I just hope they continue to multiply and bring every result that you're after and that we're after to keep this city out in the forefront and meet the needs of our constituents in all the wards and throughout. So comments, questions, anything? Kumbaya for, yes?
Kumbaya. Scott, your leadership has been impressive, and you've done a great job in setting these goals and your plans and taking action will lead us to great success. So appreciate your effort and appreciate your plan.
Councilwoman, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I, in your, where you talked about going back into the neighborhoods and doing more within the neighborhoods, and I fully back that. I would ask you to include with that some of the problems we're having now that are coming in there. Those are the squatters, you know, those of the homeless, because more and more, maybe perhaps not the districts who are further away from the center of the city, but for those of us who fringe it, we're having greater and greater problems. I just went down out there the other day, and squatters one place, squatters another place, things that we hadn't had before. And I think before we can get into some of these really great, big, innovative ideas, we have to get back to at least where we were before. And really, in that particular part of it, we're down from where we were before. So I'm just asking that you put a strong emphasis on that for words three, five, and one.
If I could respond to that, you know, these are the things that I saw as things that I wanted to initiate, make sure they were off and running and would get to the point where I felt comfortable we realized conclusion of these in the first 100 days. Didn't mean we were going to focus solely on these to the exclusion of other things. One of those things that, as you know, I was very engaged in prior to coming into this position, was the issue of homelessness. And we will stay the course on working with homelessness and making sure that we get folks off the street, we deal with the issue of squatters because they really all tie together as one very large problem in the city.
I was just wanting that emphasis there as we move into it. And I know you're not going to overlook it. I just sometimes think we want to work on it, but then the newer ideas come and they're very exciting, and we go with them, and then we find out we're deteriorating a little bit on our bottom platform. But I know how good you are, so I know you're following that, but I just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think we're, no, councilman?
It's not quite a ditto, but it is very much in the same vein in that, obviously, whether it's 95 days or 105 days, it doesn't matter. You're off to a good start. I particularly like the way you are using and moving our department heads and their subordinates because it enables these programs to happen. It looks like you've moved people into the right spot to make sure that what you want, your vision, and also your continuing vision of the previous city manager can work best. So it looks really good. And, you know, it looks like we have a stable CMO. It's like anything else when it's changed. There is a lot of cheese moved and an awful lot of people worry about it. But you seem to have kept everybody working together, thinking ahead. Thank you.
Well, I do have to provide a lot of compliments to the prior city manager. I feel like I was running, I'm running the last leg of a four-man relay, and I got the baton halfway through my leg. So I got a head start.
Good comparison. Councilwoman, yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. It's been a pleasure thus so far. Well, I just, I know you're a man of action, and I, you know how passionate I've been about returning us to the seal. And it was such a thrill when the vice president was here. And that seal went around the world when the vice president came here to talk to our community with sympathies and prayers for us and also a great appreciation for the collaboration, how well things were handled in a devastating time. But that enormous seal was seen everywhere in the world, and you have returned us to the dignity. And not there was anything wrong with the efforts of any, you know, adding to it. But this has special, special meaning, and I think, just as a small aside of what you've accomplished, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I just might say, we should also thank the people who work under you that protected this so that we didn't get the U.S. seal. They wanted to put the U.S. seal up there, but our people here said, no, this seal stays. So we did get our.
So that seal weighs 600 pounds. I don't think they were going to be removing that from the wall.
But the thing was, our people were very good at standing up for that. So appreciation to all of them, too.
So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I want to thank Ms. Adams also for the wonderful job that he's doing. I really like the fact that he, his background is in redevelopment, and he understands the technical needs of the older areas of this city. And he comes with a lot of wisdom, guidance, direction, as well as experience as to how, in fact, we could really build up the inner core workings of our inner cities. And so for that, his plan as relates to the residential component of what he has brought before this council, I think is only going to improve over the years as we really start to elevate the residential communities in the older areas of the city of Las Vegas. And so for that, he's to be commended, and I appreciate the service that he has brought to the city of Las Vegas in that respect.
Thank you, councilman. And I would finally add that I love your team. You've really pulled together a great, great team that are so easy to work with, so confident. The follow-through is immediate. So you've just really pulled together a great group. So thank you. We see nothing but glory ahead. So now, Agenda 44. Discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of the city managers, declaration of imminent hazard, and invocation of NRS 332.112, emergency contracts to resolve an emergency due to the life endangerment imminent hazards at the property known as the Moulin Rouge located at 840 909-20 West Bonanza Road and 901 and 1001 West McWilliams Avenue. Property owner, Olympic Coast Investment, Inc., at AL, George Ira Moynihan and Las Vegas Department Lenders LLC, not to exceed $2 million general fund in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council. Code Enforcement Supervisor Vicki Ozuna. In July of this year, the Moulin Rouge properties started experiencing fire activity. Code Enforcement reviewed calls for service with fire and metro and found that there were a large number of issues and concerns coming from these properties. All of the structures were open and accessible, and at any time, you could find up to 200 vagrants on site. The structures on site were structurally sound. So Code Enforcement determined that the nuisance activity involving drugs on site, the leaving of dangerous used needles, human waste along with crime on the property, and deteriorated dilapidated buildings were conditions placing people's health in high risk of immediate peril and conditions of possible loss of life. The vagrant activity on site also created an unsanitary condition as there is no water or sanitary services to these properties. This concern may, the concern was that it may create an environment that could spread communicable diseases, such as the epidemic that San Diego is currently addressing with hepatitis A. Due to these conditions, Code Enforcement issued a nuisance demolition notice and orders for all 62 parcels on July 25, 2017. These notices were issued to all of the property owners, and the parcels are under the control of a receivership. The receiver did not respond to or address any of the outstanding violations. So in September, Code Enforcement sent out bid requests to determine an approximate amount for demolishing all of the structures on site. As the amounts were over the limit allowed, staff went ahead and started working with purchasing to go through the official RFP process. When additional fire activity occurred on October 2 and 2005, it was determined that we would go ahead and compile a report and submit it to the city manager for review to determine if the property needed to be declared an imminent hazard. City Manager Scott Adams declared the property to be an imminent hazard on October 9 with concurrence from Deputy Fire Chief Robert Nolan. Additionally, City Manager Scott Adams also invoked NRS 332.112 for emergency contracts, allowing Code Enforcement to utilize the bids obtained in September to be awarded to the lowest bidder of the contractors. The total of the project is not expected to exceed $2 million. The current status of the property is that the main structure at 900 West Bonanza has had all fire damage, asbestos-contaminated refuse removed. The retail structures on this site have also been demolished. Code Enforcement has had the area, certain areas on site and items of historical significance secured by fencing to protect them from the demolition and abatement actions being taken on this site. On the rest of the parcels, asbestos remediation has started on two of the sections of the tree line condos. Two additional contractors have been awarded bids for the remaining parcels and sections of the tree line condos, and have received approval for all required permits from Clark County and Air Quality Control to start asbestos removal on all of these structures. The asbestos remediation process and demolition of the remaining structures should be completed within the next 20 days. Staff is requesting you approve ratification of the city manager's declaration of imminent hazard and invocation of NRS 332.112 to resolve an emergency to the life-endangering imminent hazards at the Moulin Rouge properties.
Thank you. I think I sent an email immediately out after that order was made, and I think it was just, there was no choice. You had no choice, and to wait, you really did put people in danger. And listening to Councilman and how many people he saw running out of it, I mean, horrible.
Madam Mayor, if I could make a comment here and read something into the record. I think, as I mentioned in briefing, this was not a decision that came easy. This was because of the magnitude of the expense and the extent of the property deterioration and the fact that there was some historic significance at one time on that property. But I had to, I had to go through a balancing test, of balancing the that perceived historic status with that of human life and safety. And I think at the end of the day, I had to fall down on the side of the fact that we could not tolerate any further activity that would put at risk anybody that might be living in those properties, even if it wasn't proper. We have had anywhere from 100 to 200 persons living there at any given time, and it just wouldn't have been appropriate to see, to not do anything and see somebody lose their life as a result of failure to act. So I wanted to make that comment. But the other thing that I want to do is correct something I said to you in briefing yesterday. The concern, one of the concerns we've had is we took, I took this action at a time where the property was in the process of being disposed by the receiver through the courts. And the concern we had was that we could get sort of hung out to dry on our costs if we didn't get involved in that disposition process. So I think our attorneys intervened in that process, and they got the buyers to agree to a condition as a stipulation of purchase. And I'll read that the buyer agrees to accept the property subject to the city of Las Vegas notice to demolish the property which had been delivered to the seller, or if the city demolishes the existing buildings prior to closing, the buyer agrees to accept the property subject to any lien placed on the property for the cost of such demolition. I think I stated yesterday that they would agree to pay those right up front. I want to correct that. We simply got the buyers to agree to accept the lien for all of our costs incurred as a result of the actions that we took. And that's important because at some point, we'll get recovery on those liens. We'll at least have a lien in place on the property for the amount of the expenses we're incurring.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Any other comments? Yes, councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we are marking the end of an era here, and so there's the history to be considered because we do not do this lightly. This was a landmark place in my youth, and I still have at my house a copy of the 1955 Life magazine with the Moulin Rouge dancing line on the cover in full color. It was really quite something nationally when you think about it. And so, and it came at a time when it was absolutely born of necessity in that there was segregation going on in certain aspects of the society. But it was a proper place to be, and it was a cool place to visit. I did as a teenager when I shouldn't, but then I was welcomed. So what can I say? In any event, the thing is, is that we should make sure there's some memory of the history at this location. If the county is buying it, we should still make sure as a condition that there is a suitable monument or memorialization, not simply a platter of brass on the building, but something that talks about what happened, why there was a Moulin Rouge, and what it meant to everybody in Las Vegas. It didn't mean as much to me as a 13-year-old kid because I wasn't quite sure what was going on at that age when it was opened up. But, boy, later on, I learned how we had this subcurrent of misbehavior going on, so I say politely, that was interrupted by activists in this community of all races and religions. So let's just make sure that as part of this, we remember that and that we make sure to jot down a condition on whatever and whoever is there, that we have true memories in honor. I think that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I can assure you, councilman, that there is a huge passion to bring back a Moulin Rouge, whether it be on that specific site or another site, but I am constantly involved with members of the community who have that passion, which I support, and just see it being something, a hotel, whatever it would become, that would be one of the highlights of the entire traveling tourist and residential folk that just remember that property and maybe were there and had a little piece of it, but who know what the history is and how great it would be to revive it today. So not necessarily that site, but with that wonderful sign, the Moulin Rouge sign. It's got a great potential. So anybody else, any comment? Yes?
Just wanted to agree with the councilman and mayor that this is a decision that is not taken lightly and it is of great historical significance for our community. And it's sad that we have to come to this conclusion. But as you said, Mayor, it is of some consolation that the Moulin Rouge sign is proudly displayed currently in the Neon Museum. And maybe there'll be something in the future, but right now, we do have that for all of us to appreciate what we have here in our history of Las Vegas. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I really want to thank the entire council for their support on this item because it's very significant to the state of Nevada as far as the historic site, this historic site. It's on the National Registry as well as the Nevada State of Historic Places Registry as well. So there's a lot of rich history surrounding this parcel. For those of you that don't know the history, just look it up. There's a lot of information and content out there. I won't go through the rigorous task of explaining the backdrop and historic elements of the site, but I can share this with you. There are a lot of us in this community, specifically those of us that were born and bred in this community with a lot of history and relationships tied to the Moulin Rouge site. We hold it very near and dear to our hearts, and specifically the residents in this area that have lived here for so many years. Having said that, the property over the years have just basically gone under decay, under decay, under decay. There's been a lot of developers that have come forward with great intentions to redevelop the site, to develop the site, and there was, there has been a lot of stop and go. And in the midst of that process of the stop and go developments, there's been well over, as Vicki Ozuna, our code enforcement officer, mentioned, well over 100 to 200 tenants, I'll just put it that way, tenants. tenants, I'll just put it that way, tenants, living on this closed-down, dilapidated site. No power, no water. It's, Vicky, to my understanding, over fifteen acres. What is the acreage of, of this development, roughly?
I, I'm, I'm not sure what the actual acreage is, but it's a very large parcel with all the parcels.
Right. So we're talking about a number of structures that are open and accessible, some that are, that appear to be closed, but have been jimmy-rigged to appear to be that way, but they're open, and you have a number of people that are hanging clothes, taking baths, and building fires. We're talking over a hundred to two-hundred people at one particular time scattered throughout these buildings. And so for that, there has been, I'll just utilize the month of July alone, on July fourth, there were approximately three fires, but between July fourth and July seventh, there were a total of four fires.
Correct.
And in addition to that, there has been several more fires in the process. And the one that really grabbed my time and attention to where I knew that it was time to draw a line in the sand was when the event took place on October first here in Las Vegas. And we all know what took place in Las Vegas on October first. On October seventh, if my date is correct, I believe it is, on October seventh, there was a major fire at the Moulin Rouge site, and there were fire trucks on-site from six a.m. to approximately twelve noon. And when we were standing out there, and the fire department was still putting that fire out, in another building, there were people, and Tony Guarino was there to watch this with me as well. It was an unbelievable sight. Now, the fire started sometime around five-thirty a.m. in the morning. The fire department was putting the fire out up until about twelve noon, and people in the adjacent building were rolling bicycles out of the structure next to where this big fire was. The fire department thought that the whole place were vacant because of the fire. There were people still in the other buildings while this major fire was taking place. And we knew that, wait a minute, how do we know if there weren't anyone in the structure that the fire department was working on? So do you have folks still sleeping, not knowing that there's a major fire right next to them? And we had no idea that they were there, and they're walking out of the building as though, you know, what's going on? It was the scariest moment and one of the most reflective moments of, of my life to, to see that take place. And so I knew that it was time to do something, and I'm glad that the mayor and council agree that it's time to go ahead and move this development into a new phase of its life. Now, does that mean we forget about the historic nature of the Moulin Rouge? No, because I know a lot of members of this community is very concerned about that. But one thing that we have done is we've preserved the iconic Moulin Rouge sign. We moved it to the Neon Boneyard for display, and potentially for it to be displayed possibly in one of our medians or back on the site. I don't know, but we do have that well protected. So that's one of the key elements that we have secured. In addition to that, through code enforcement, there are some mosaic tiles, as I understand, I haven't seen it, but as I understand it, some mosaic tiles that have been protected that were not damaged in the fire. And so for that, that has been fenced. But the remaining portion of all of the structures on this site will be coming down. And so I know that my office has received a number of phone calls, emails, as well as stopping me in traffic, as well as in the grocery store, asking me, you know, what's happening on the site. So let it be known that all of the structures will be coming down in order for the city to be in a position not to be held liable for someone's life. Because for me, I would rather save someone's life versus the historic site itself. Okay? Thank God that we're able to do both. And so therefore, we're taking every building down for that, for, for the sake of life, safety, while at the same time preserving the national historic nature, as well as the State of Historic Places designation for this particular site. Now, how we move this site forward with additional development opportunities, such as what Councilman Coffin had mentioned, as far as how to incorporate some of the old with the new, that's yet to be determined, and I'm happy to sit down and discuss that as new developments come online. But that's where we are at this point. And so for that, I'm going to move that this item be moved for approval, subject to all conditions. And I also would like to close by thanking our City Manager, Scott Adams, for allowing me to burn his ear up, pardon, pardon the pun, but the day of the fire, I, I was on the phone, and, and he, he got an earful of my concern, and he jumped right into action. And Scott, I really want to thank you for, for your assistance, as well as Chief McDonald, as well as Orlando, for allowing me to bend your ear as far as how, in fact, you know, what we needed to do in order to save these folks' lives out at this site. So, Mayor, thank you for allowing me a few moments to, to share what was on my heart and mind, and we'll move this item forward, and my motion is for approval, subject to all conditions. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number forty-five. Discussion for possible action regarding complaint to set a hearing date for disciplinary action against Thai Spa and Mirage LLC and Nevada Limited Liability Company, DBA, Thai Days Spa and Siva Porn, Lorendo individually and his managing member, Thai Spa and Massage LLC, whose place of business is located at seventy-eight seventy-one West Charleston and Suite Number One-Fifty, Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada, eight-nine-one-one-seven, as holders of the cosmetology license number G-sixty-four oh-seven-six-two-eight, massage license number P-sixty-three zero-zero-four-seven-three, and independent massage therapist license number G-sixty-four dash oh-seven-two-three-six for violations of the Las Vegas Municipal Code. This is in Ward One with Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Good morning, Mayor. Seth Floyd, Deputy City Attorney, here with Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. As you stated, this is a request for a complaint to issue and to set a hearing date for disciplinary action against the Thai Days Spa located on West Charleston, just at a ten-thousand-foot view, and then I'll let Mary give some more facts. An investigation was conducted on the site. A number of violations of Title Six, Title Nine, Title Nineteen, and state law were discovered, which is the impetus for this complaint. We would request, and we can talk about this at the end, the hearing date of December sixth. We've got to set that between about thirty and sixty days, and that would give us enough time to serve the applicant. Thanks.
Thank you.
For the record, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. In October of two thousand sixteen, Thai Days Spa received a license for cosmetology and an accessory massage establishment license. With an accessory massage establishment license, massage is only allowed in an area no larger than a hundred and fifty square feet. So it's a very small area. It's usually one room. And due to operational concerns that were noticed in April and in May, there was an undercover operation that was conducted with the licensed officers and with Metro. This took place on June twenty-seventh. It resulted in a solicitation for prostitution. Massage services were also taking place in an area greater than a hundred and fifty square feet. They had two rooms that were operating. When the undercover Metro detective went in, the owner of the business was in the other room giving a massage at that time. And also, the massage that the officer did receive, undercover officer, was being performed by a, by an unlicensed massage therapist. And these were among the more, the, these were the major violations. There were a few more. We're recommending that the complaint be issued and approved, and that a hearing be set for December sixth, and a time-certain date, time-certain be given as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions before I turn this over to Mayor Protem? Okay, please.
We have had difficulty in this area. I appreciate all the hard work that's been done to be able to pin all of this down. I don't think there's much question as to what's been happening there and how we need to improve it. So I move to approve to set a hearing date of December sixth, two thousand seventeen, disciplinary action on the Thai Spa.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post, and I am returning my confidential book to you. Councilwoman? You may have to use your, your...
Something's not working.
Yeah, so you may have to use your mouse, which is what I did. There it goes.
Ah.
Good. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Forty-six. This item would be trailed to her, be heard after Item Sixty-five. So let's see, sixty-five, and then back to forty-six. Okay, so we're up to Agenda Item Forty-seven. This item would be trailed to be heard after Item Sixty-six. And we have Agenda Item Forty-eight has been withdrawn, so we are now on to Agenda Item Forty-nine, recommending committee bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number two-oh-one-seven-dash-three-four. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Your Honor, Bill Number twenty-seventeen dash thirty-four, in orders to amend LVMC Chapter six-point-eight, due to authorized smoke shops to sell marijuana paraphernalia and provide related matters.
Move for approval.
There's a motion. Please vote, and I am abstaining. And that motion carries. And let's move on now to Agenda Item Fifty, Bill Number two-oh-one-seven-dash-three-five. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Bill Number twenty-seventeen dash thirty-five, First Amendment, in orders related to short-term residential rentals and associated hosting platforms, amendment LVMC Chapter six-point-seven-five, to adopt provisions to implement enabling language of Chapter three-point-four-seven statutes of Nevada, two thousand seventeen, to require the submission of portal reports from housing platforms and operators to establish subpoena requirements with respect thereto and provide related matters.
Move for approval, subject to First Amendment.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item Fifty. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item Fifty-one, Bill Number two-oh-one-seven-three-eight. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. After I read this, I'm going to have a few comments for the record. Bill Number twenty-seventeen dash thirty-eight, in orders to amend the Unified Development Code to authorize a limited expansion, enlargement, or alteration of nonconforming adult motion picture arcades located within downtown Centennial Plan and provide related matters. Your Honor, the, some time ago, about a month or two ago, we received a request from Councilman Coffin to look into a business in his ward that wanted to tear down and rebuild, and this was a sexually oriented business that was nonconforming. In order to accomplish that, a bill was introduced, and it was approved by this council two or three meetings ago. After that meeting, it came to my attention that one element of that particular business, and that's the element known as a motion picture arcade, needed to be called out separately because there's adult emporiums and motion picture arcades, and we had only captured one part of that two-part component of the business in that original ordinance. I teed this up myself in order to give the council the opportunity, and the councilmen the opportunity, to include the second part of the business that I think was meant to be included in that ordinance all along. It's my understanding that since that time that I sponsored this ordinance, that there may be a desire to not include this as the, in the original bill or in this bill right now. And so I don't know if there's any comment from Councilman Coffin or anybody here representing the applicant, but if there is a desire to include motion picture arcades, they need to be, this bill needs to be adopted, and that would complete the one-for-one replacement. If you tore down the old building, built the new, you could have the same thing in it. If there is not a desire to do that, the portion of the building that could have been used for motion picture arcade could still be used for sexually oriented business, but it just wouldn't be motion picture arcade. Having said that, I just need direction.
Okay, thank you. We need direction on that.
Madam Mayor, if I just might say, my understanding from the people who lived in the area, that the, and I thought it was purposely left out, because those people, that was the one thing that they felt they did not want to have, and there was a lot of them that came for that. So I thought it was purposefully left out, and that's why I was able to back it. I just want to make that comment.
Your Honor?
Please, Councilman.
Thank you. Yes, I plan to strike this or leave it to the requister, the city attorney, who did this at my request, actually, and so I appreciate him explaining this, because the last sentence of what Brad just mentioned is the key, I think, to striking this, and that is that it's, it's one of these unfortunate, unforced errors, you know, that happens in a bill drafting situation. So we don't want to have to live this again. And our interpretation, according to the city attorney, as expressed in that last sentence of what he said, indicates that they won't be penalized for a loss of space. Space is such a governing issue in these SOBs because of the percentage of adult content, which then governs the difference between regular general retail and/or an SOB retail. So by them giving up the booths, which was objectionable to a lot of neighbors, but not losing the square footage that would have been allocated to those booths, it's really a harmless situation. I think it's a good outcome, and I think that the owner will support that, and frankly, the First Amendment gets so touchy, it's hard to tell when someone will challenge something. But I believe we're on solid ground here in striking this, not letting this bill go any further.
Is the owner here?
And it is unnecessary.
No owner here, correct?
Well, Mr. Mayor might be here to, to acknowledge that, but if not, that is okay, because that is an understanding that I have with he and the owner. So I'm prepared, then, to move to strike this.
Okay.
That's my motion.
That's the motion. Councilman Coffin has made a motion to strike this. So please vote.
Strike the whole thing that we voted for?
No, 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 just this bill.
No, just this, just this here, about the motion picture arcades.
That's what you were concerned about, Councilman?
I think you went the wrong way. You meant to support this. This is taking care of what they wanted. They didn't want the arcades.
If I do that again, I did that the first time.
So will you, will let her pull back?
Let me pull back.
And then read.
Send it to me.
Okay, all right, so we all do it again?
Okay.
Okay, here we go. And post, please. There we are. Great. Thank you. That motion carries. So Agenda Item Number Fifty-two, Bill Number two-oh-one-seven-three-nine. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number twenty-seventeen dash thirty-nine, in orders to amend the city's administrative code adopted by LVMC sixteen-point-oh-two-point-oh-one-oh to require baby-changing tables for certain public accommodations, as required by Assembly Bill Number two-four-one of the twenty-seventeenth section of Nevada's Legislature and provide related matter.
All I want to know is, why didn't Tom Perrigo, who is proposing this, propose this when I had babies?
It was the legislature.
My daughter made her today the one that swallows quarters.
[laughing].
Lauren, today is her birthday. She's six years old.
Oh, congratulations.
Yes, I want to say happy birthday to my baby Lauren.
And it's my sister's birthday today, too.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that. Yeah, yeah, so happy birthday to your sister as well.
So go one-one-one.
Right.
Great, congratulations.
So, yeah.
I want to know if she's still swallowing quarters?
No, she swallowed a lot of candy last night.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so she's, she's gone beyond quarters. She stepped up to candy. But I would...
Motion to approve?
Move for motion to approve on this item. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post.
Baby changing tables.
Wonderful. Well, now all the airplanes have changing tables, too. So that motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Fifty-three. Recommending committee bills eligible for adoption later meeting. Bill Items Number Fifty-three to Fifty-five, Bills Number two-oh-one-seven-dash-one-nine and two-oh-one-seven-dash-three-six and three-seven will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. Whoops, here goes the book again. Hold on one sec. Okay. Agenda Item Number Fifty-six, new bills. Items Number Fifty-six, Fifty-seven, Bills Number two-oh-one-seven-dash-four-oh and four-oh-one are new bills. City Attorney, would you read the new bills, please?
I'll be happy to, Your Honor. Before I read them, I just need to go back real quick. Item Number Forty-nine, which was Bill Number twenty-seventeen dash thirty-four, which is the authorization for smoke shops to sell marijuana paraphernalia. You made an extension, which you have made probably a hundred times already, but nevertheless, the legislature, the legislation requires that the reason be stated on the record. So if I could, it's my understanding that your son continues to represent people involved in the marijuana industry, and that's the same reason you are abstaining on Item Number Forty-nine as you have in the past. Is that correct?
Thank you. Do we have to pull it back and say that?
Nope. If you just say that's correct, then we're good.
Yes, our dear counsel. Yes, our dear counsel, that is correct. I have—one of my sons is in the cannabis business. Thank you.
With that, Bill Number 17-40, in order to repeal LVMC 7.40.315, which prohibits pet shops from selling and disposing of dogs, cats, and pot-bellied pigs and those obtained from an animal care facility or nonprofit animal rescue organization and provide for related matters. And finally, Bill Number 2017-41, in order to amend LVMC 2.51.020 to repeal a provision requiring that public employee who files for political office be replaced or on unpaid leave or absence until election for that office and provide for related matters.
Thank you very much. Items 56 and 57—oh, we already did that. New bills Number 2017-4 and 2017-41 are being referred to the full council, the council of the whole, at our next city council meeting, which is scheduled for November 15, 2017.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just have a comment.
Please.
On Item Number 56, which is the pet store ordinance, I'm not going to comment on the merits of the ordinance. We'll do that November 15. But I remember when this was introduced a couple of years ago, it probably had the most public comment of any agenda item since I've been on the city council. So what I just want to make sure—and obviously, it went through and it passed, and the prohibition was in place, and part of that was it wasn't going to take place for another two years, which is coming up here pretty quick. But I just want to make sure that the public knows that we're rehearing this on November 15 because I'm assuming that when this was all said and done two years ago, that people kind of forgot about it and figured it was going to go in place in January. So I just hope that our communications department gets the word out. November 15, we're going to be hearing this again because the people that spoke for and against it— there was quite a few people against it, but there were people that were for it— know about it and have an opportunity to come out and be heard. So we need to make sure we get the word out. I hope the Las Vegas Review-Journal does an article and puts the date in there that we're going to rehear this so the public has a chance to come out and make their comments. So Mr. Regelman, if you could just help us get the word out. And, you know, Scott, whatever we need to do, and Luann, and just make sure everybody knows about this that came out the first time so they have an opportunity to come out again. And then we will talk about it, and it looks like we'll probably vote again. So thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Congressman.
And Madam Mayor, if I might make a comment. I also hope that when we do have it heard, that we give the opportunity to be heard the full length of time and not just a few seconds. Because it's not fair for all of those individuals who came out, and if we say we're going to be, you know, transparent and all that, that they don't have the opportunity to have the full time to respond with their concerns. I personally spent a lot of time investigating this. I started where I know my newer colleagues are right now, feeling this is ridiculous that we're doing this. And then as I looked into things more, I changed my mind. And it was because of a lot of information that I obtained. And in changing this now, we will be moving in the opposite direction of probably almost the entire nation, as they too have done investigations. So all I want mainly is that the people who come here, either side, have the opportunity to speak, and it's not just, you know, a few seconds, that it's the full amount of time. If not, I don't think that would be very fair.
Okay, well, since we're not commenting on it, I wouldn't say that there hasn't been one case in the state of Nevada where this found anything. So we will move on now to Agenda— we haven't, right. So anyway, no, the whole state, not just down here. Okay, Agenda Items 58 and 59 are on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine and recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion to approve consent Agenda Items 58 and 59? 58 and 50—
I would move for— I move for approval of Agenda Items Number 58 and 59.
Did you, Councilman Coffin, since—please? There's a motion. Mayor Pro Tem's made it.
Thank you. I will support this motion. What is happening here is, very soon, we're going to see another beautiful high-rise on the Boulevard itself, not far from the Stratosphere. So I think it's going to be a very, very nice addition to the Boulevard. That means a lot to all of us downtown.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment, Mayor, that I saw that again, and it is one of the most beautiful buildings that we've had to come before us.
We just wanted to get there.
Right, right.
Okay, you have to vote, if you wouldn't mind. Okay, and post, please. Okay, that—those carry. We will now go on to Agendas—Item 60 through 63 have been abayed to the 3rd of January. So we're on to Agenda Item 64. If I can count that high, 64, which is the one that we take the 46 after or before? Take it after. Okay, Agenda Item 64, and we have trailed 46. So these are the two. 64, and we trailed 46? Oh, it stands by itself? Okay. SDR 68280, abandons item, public hearing. Applicant Owner: Safety Institute Building LLC. For possible action on a hearing, request for major amendment to an approved plot plan review, Z0035-85, for waiver of title 19.08 landscaping irrigation requirements. 1.33 acres located 820 South Valley View Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, with Mayor Pro Tem Tarkanian. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the applicant or owner present? Hello, Mr. Lowenstein.
Good morning. Madam Mayor, as a result of code enforcement action, the applicant is requesting a waiver of landscape irrigation system requirement for the commercial location. In addition, an exception is required to allow only shrubs and cactus as landscape material in the perimeter landscape areas where a combination of 15-gallon trees and 5-gallon shrubs are originally required. Staff does not support the request, so recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you. This was before us, before. Okay, so I'm going to turn this—any other comments, questions here? And no representation here. Councilwoman.
Just to give a background on this area, it is what we consider the entrance to the Springs Preserve area from the first major street, which is Charleston. And on this street, Valley View, between Charleston and the Springs Preserve, we have been making improvements gradually throughout the years. These—we have a series of buildings, maybe six in a row, that when they receive the conditions to build on those lots, the conditions included trees and really some rather lush vegetation in the areas which aligned the right-of-way. Gradually through the years, that has fallen down, and it looks terrible right now. We feel that we wanted to see—and that was why we heard it before, and then we wanted to see if there were ways we could get monies to the person because the owner feels there is no irrigation there, although that was a requirement of the site when the building was first built. Of all those six sites in a row, the requirement of irrigation be put there was in every single one of those, including this one. And we've tried to see—and I want to thank Jorge so much because he spent a lot of time working to see, could we get something there that could grow without any water whatsoever? We've tried a few things, but quite honestly, they're very scraggly. In fact, even Jorge used the term "scraggly", and it has not worked. We have a choice of letting it go and not keeping it up to the standards that we would want to have as an entrance to the—you can see it's there, those little cacti are what the owner has now. We wanted to see what we would be able to do, but in any way, it hasn't worked. We do feel we can try and help the owner as much as we can. But we have already given almost $100,000—95, to be exact, 95,000— to the owner to help her as she developed this land. And we feel, however, we have to have some irrigation there, if it's just a small amount, but we still have to have it in order to have the plants come anywhere near what was required. We're not asking for the trees. We're not asking for the lush landscape that was supposed to be there, but we're asking for something better than you can see right now. And so my motion is to deny.
May I ask you, where's the water supposed to come from?
The water—is—Jorge feels there's the water main in back of the building, and it can come from there to the front, as it did previously.
And is it—is the back of the building, his building, that he—and he has that property, he has right to that access?
It's the lady who has right to that access. Her neighbor has irrigation already, and I believe will be coming soon to see if he can— he has artificial green trees in there now, which look absolutely horrible. And we just can't let one person bring down all the rest. We've got to maintain that. I looked at—I went to Councilman Coffin's area downtown. I saw those beautiful trees, the walkable neighborhood. I go to Ricky's Ward, and for something as beautiful— I mean, it's our Central Park, the Springs Preserve is. And every year, they're getting better and better. I think we owe it to them to finish that last section on Valley View in the way it should be because it's the entrance from the major avenue, so—
Okay, so there's a motion to deny on this. And please vote and please post, then. Councilman Coffin, there we are. And so it is. And Agenda Items 65, 66 are medical marijuana-related items. And I have a son who is involved therein, and therefore, I shall be abstaining. And Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem will take over.
This is SUP 71037. Applicant Boulevard Medical LLC, owner GE 714 LLC, for possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 4,553-square-foot marijuana cultivation facility use at 714 South First Street, CM Commercial Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Coffin. The Planning Commission recommends denial. The staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Steph?
Well, I’m going to hear from you first, and then from Mr. Lowenstein.
Very good. Good morning. For the record, Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. With me is Robert Casillas, the applicant's consultant, who has extensive experience in the marijuana industry. In the audience, we have Richard Gallegos, who is with the applicant as his architect, and he's here to answer any questions. Unfortunately, Mr. James, who wanted to be here today, he's been fighting gastric problems for a long time. He said—I don't like to say, "Oh, this is in public," which you're entitled to know because he doesn't want you to think that he doesn't care. He's had three procedures in the hospital, and now he's home and just can't get out of the house today. So that's why he's not here. Marijuana cultivation and production are permitted in this zoning district with the approval of a special-use permit. The applicant has submitted a survey that indicates the required separation and conforms to the measurement requirements. The subject site is already developed with a structure that will be reused for the proposed uses. The special-use permit requirements will be enforced through ongoing business license review and inspection and will assure consistency with the goals of public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the subject site to be suitable and the uses to be compatible with surrounding uses. We'd ask that you follow the recommendation of staff. The two big issues regarding this application seem to be odor control and how the deliveries are going to be handled. And with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Casillas to address those concerns.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Robert Casillas, 3859 Valley View Boulevard, Las Vegas, 89103. I've been involved in marijuana industry here in Southern Nevada since 2015, and as a consultant to Mr. James since then. And also, I am a consultant to over 12 certificates here in Southern Nevada. I've been working with this project, and we sought out this particular building because of the lack of inventory in the area, and this was well-suited for us. We wanted to assure—because we were well aware of odor issues within our industry and the lack of control of it. Mr. James was absolutely determined that he would be the paramount example of odor control within our industry, especially for this project. And for this reason, I wanted to give the council and the public the reasons why that will not be an issue. One is because of the mere size. The size of the grow area will be split in two parcels so that there is a mitigated footprint of when the odor is at a peak of flowering. For this, most of the facilities that are considered industrial are 25,000 on average, 25,000 square feet, where we are less than 3,000 square feet in total. So just the mere size is a mitigating factor. But what we're going to take is a couple of precautions, and I'll say four, to be exact, to assure the mitigation and the lack of odor for this facility, is that most of the facilities that we've seen throughout the county or Southern Nevada, they have zero odor control. That's why they're emitting such a pungent smell out there. Some are taking a couple of measures. We're going to take four. The first that we'll be taking is having cylindrical activated carbon filters. These are—they look like jet turbines. They hang in the grow room. And we'll have 11 of these throughout this small facility. It's much of an overkill, however, that's what we're there to do. The second one is a UV technology, which is a UV air purifier. This will allow these devices to sanitize the air, scrub it for airborne contaminants such as mold, bacteria, and of course, the odor. So we'll have numerous of these as well. Finally, the third layer, which is—if all else fails or something for redundancy, we have portable. The portable ones come on wheels. There are carbon filter scrubbers that can be moved anywhere throughout the facility, and we can increase the number if there is a smell. Those would be like a last line of defense. And most important, and least, but which a lot of these facilities do not have, is the main HVAC unit carbon filter. So we're all familiar with the HVAC system. This has a four-inch-thick carbon filter, which is constantly scrubbing anything that may have escaped before it even goes outside of the building and over any hoods that may be taking in air from these rooms. We are absolutely certain that these measures will omit every bit of odor. As well with this, we also want to talk about the area and the concern of operations, of people coming to the facility for deliveries or not. We have access to the rear of the building, 100% access. We have a chained gate where we can bring in a vehicle and unload and load any product that's packaged to leave the back of the building. We know the street has very limited parking. And the issue with that is we have a very limited amount for our size of our facility, a very limited amount of employees. So we'd like to let you know that 100%, we have access to the rear of the building, and our activities would be designated to the rear of this building. And finally, there was an issue of the existing presence of this street. Myself going to be looking for residents here within the city of Las Vegas and representing a couple of other applicants that will come before you for future projects. There's a homeless issue is when we go there now—even this morning, I drove by— there is a homeless encampment in front of our existing potential facility. Our increased security in being there 24/7 presence will help mitigate this, make it a safer area. We have plans to improve the front of this building as a nondescript marijuana area, but have improved area vegetation and just make the building aesthetically more beautiful. We have—just because of this request and the public notice of the SUP, we've had other businesses in the art community, actually, they leased 721 and 723 First Street as a glass-blowing studio, which would attract tourism. And the reason they chose that location is because of our type of business. And their business is glass-related products in a studio that people can view. So already, just the impact of us potentially being there is bringing activity onto that street and for improvement. I will assure—as of the project manager—I can assure the mayor and the council that there will be zero odor. And of course, there is recourse if that happens and we fail. Thank you.
Mr. Lowenstein?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. The applicant is proposing to operate—
Uh, the applicant is proposing to operate both marijuana cultivation and production facility in an existing structure that will, will be renovated for the purpose but not expanded. Both uses meet the minimum use requirements of Title Nineteen, and staff finds that the subject site to be suitable for the proposed uses and recommending approval. Thank you.
All right. Any comments from, um, members of the council?
Your Honor. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Coffin. I pointed to you. I'm sorry, I should've said your name too.
Oh, it's okay. I didn't read your finger. I'll say it whenever. Anyway, uh, wonder if, um, in addition to Mr. Casillas, we could have Mr. Gallegos come up?
Yes.
Because this is in my ward in a downtown area. Now, the funny thing is, this was, used to be an industrial area way back in the day. Lumberyard down there and so many other things, and so it's coming back in a different kind of way. But there are these concerns about odor. You've addressed, Roberts addressed them proactively. But Richard, let me ask you as the architect, um, all of these filters inside, they'll be functioning all the time or at least as often as they are needed. Do they create a negative pressure in the building envelope?
Yeah, yes. Mayor Protem, for the record, Richard Gallegos, sixty-seven twenty-five Southeastern here, also with the applicant. Through you again, Mayor Protem, Councilor Councilman. Yes, uh, these, we've designed this facility where it's virtually negative pressure, so we contain all the air inside, and then we control what really emerges from the building. So that is a different design than some of the past two dozen facilities we've been involved with, so.
Do you have a special or need, or does this building need, because it's masonry construction, does it need any special, um, I don't want to use the word envelope, not know what I'm talking about, but paint or surfacing or in some way or another, uh, coating that helps prevent odor from coming through the, the walls and the usual inevitable cracks in the masonry walls in an old building?
Well, we're gonna do our best effort to seal the building just from environmental standpoint and energy conservation, Councilman, but certainly the, without getting too technical, and just for the record, we do have a licensed, certified hygienist that actually specifically deals with odor, and they're called terpenes to get technical. So what we've done, again, in this case, is to control those terpenes from escaping is, is we've designed a system throughout the facility so that we, again, could treat it, control it, uh, and manage it as it leaves our building. So to answer your question, some of these services, yes, will be treated. Mainly, those are for health reasons, not so much, uh, for smell or odor, but we will have numerous amounts of revised services in the building.
Okay. I think that the last point I want to make or question is that you are aware, and I know the client is aware, and all representatives are aware, that this is a pretty tough ordinance, that you're, they're going to, you know, embrace here. You're gonna meet it. You have to, and so that is why we're, at least that's why I'm in favor of this, is that you knew what you were getting into. Mark James is an old, old friend and former colleague in the Senate, and he understands the value of what that written word means in the ordinance about no odor. So, you know, there, there won't be any question of naivete here. It is important for us to understand, and I think that, given that, I will be voting in favor. There might be other members of the council who may have additional requests of you or questions.
Mr. Coffin, I would like to say if there's anybody in the audience, any member of the public who would like to make a comment on this item, would they please step forward? Would be glad to hear your comments. Seeing none then, we'll move on. As far as the council is concerned, does anybody have any count, uh, comments? Ms. Fiore down there, all the way to you.
I do. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, uh, I appreciate the comments and the dialogue at, at the podium today, but I do, I feel I have to agree with the Planning Commission's vote to deny the applications as they are not harmonious and compatible with the adjacent development, nor is the use harmonious and compatible with the existing surrounding development, and that although it is currently an industrial-like area, we recently approved a restaurant with an outdoor patio, not more than two feet from the proposed site, and that the restaurant over, is our owner has already invested nearly quarter of a million dollars toward opening that business, and my understanding is it's only on hold pending this, the decisions here. At the same time, we, we did approve as a council the Vision twenty-four-five recently, and when asked the, the planning director, is this compatible and harmonious with our Vision twenty-four-five plan, he said, well, no, this is not, uh, you know, harmonious compatible with that plan. So I, I feel that as part of our vision for the future of the community, that now is the time that we stand by that, and even our, uh, our Scott Adams briefed our redevelopment plan as we go forward and taking our community to the future, that this would not be the appropriate place for this kind of, uh, of business. And speaking to members in the industry, other members in the industry, they all, there was, I couldn't find anybody that thought that this should be anywhere but in a truly industrial area, this kind of, uh, business. Now, if it was a dispensary or that type, it would be a, a different story. But I, I have my concerns, and I'll have to be voting against this today.
Is there any other comment on the council? Anybody wanted to mention? This is a commercial industrial area right now. I, I probably have either the nemesis or the glory of being the person who is anti-marijuana from all the past votes that I've made. I have, I know, however, the industry is coming in. I've had people look into, uh, this particular business because I think it's a difficult decision to make. I don't know if it's gonna go past, much past, commercial industrial because of all those big electrical fingers that are right adjacent to it, you know, all those tall, I mean, that surely is industrial. And I, um, and I don't know if I've ever really felt we had a chance to do something experimental as far as seeing if all of this type of thing works. And I feel that in the past, wherever we've gone, we have not been able to find cultivation places that did not give out an odor, but in the last six months or so, two men, I know when I met with staff, two of them had been to places in our area, in our valley, that did have such places, and as I've read in other places, they are doing that. Now, I, I had my staff go out, I went out, and, um, I could vote yes on this, Mr. Coffin. However, I cannot vote yes on it unless we have a condition that states, if the proposed use has two violations of the City of Las Vegas odor vi, ordinance, the use shall be required to cease, and the special use permit shall be revoked at a separate public hearing. So if we're so sure that the odor's not going to come, if what we're seeing in other places is they have been able to contain the odor, then I would say, in the way this is being done, not utilizing the full amount of space, not having everything growing at the same time, I mean, you'll have the budding, you'll have the this, so the odor would be contained inside as well as what you're doing to prevent it from going outside. I could vote on that, but I cannot, and that's because if you think you can do this, then I think you'd put with surety down that if we find two violations, you just have to stop your business. So I can vote approval, I would vote approval if that condition is there, and I will vote no if it's not there.
Mayor Protem, thank you if I might speak to that. I think, I think you're making a reasonable request. I think that any applicant in any business knows that they violate, they run the hazards. So let's make sure we're clear on the number of offenses. Would you say then it's three strikes and you're out, that kind of thing? Because that way, we, we know they have an offense, obviously, they're gonna be on guard. A second one, they know they're in deep trouble because if they do it again, it is, they're gone. Or do we word it in such a fashion that upon a third offense, we, uh, must hold a hearing for revocation? I think we'll have to do the hearing for revocation in any event, like we would do on any business. Would that make sense?
Well, I will tell you this. I think that if we use the word may instead of can, then the council that's present at the time could make the decision. In other words, uh, I would say they, it may be required to cease so that they know they're on record as having this to cease if it comes, and then if they feel there's some extenuating circumstance, uh, then they could give it a, a third strike.
I see, so.
But I would like to hold it to two. You know, when you come forward and you say, okay, and all this stuff looks good, it's sort of a chance for us to see if it is good. It's a chance for us to see as we, because there's going to be more of these coming. We all know that.
Okay, so you're saying I'm gonna make sure that I'm correct. So at a second offense, there would be given a stop order, and we would schedule a, an order for revocation, or would we do it the way we usually do, which is on a second offense, we would have a hearing or notice to decide about revocation?
At the second offense, I would feel that the council has the right to terminate the business.
Okay. I think that it's clear to me, and let's see if they are willing to enter into this contract.
We're fine with that. The only concern I have is, let's say that two offenses happen over ten years, but if we have the opportunity to come to council, the way Mayor Protem is suggesting, that'll be fine.
I think if it's, yeah, I would think a council would say if it's over ten years.
Or something like that. No, as long as we have the opportunity to come to council, we're fine with that.
And I think there are unforeseen circumstances too, Mayor Protem, where you have equipment break.
Sure.
Despite the best of intentions, a power failure stops everything in the area, not just the filters in that business, so I, I think the whole council could make a rational decision based upon the circumstances.
Well, I think this gives us an opportunity to see in a small area if it can be done, and if all the words that are given to us by the industry are accurate, and if all of our looking into what's happening in other places, our current information is accurate. And if, if we, I mean, I think it's going to be a help to us throughout the city as things come up. Now, as far as planning is concerned, I don't know if you would want to say that, you know, if the third one comes in, it would be absolutely required to stop, but that would be up to you.
Mayor Protem? If I may, if I might clarify the condition or reread it as what I hear is being amended. If the proposed use has two violations of the City Las Vegas odor ordinance, the use may be required to cease, and the special use permit can be revoked at a separate public hearing.
I believe that's legally how we would have to handle it. Am I correct?
But Tim, I was gonna ask a question. Is it two within the same year, or would it be if they had one in year one and one in year two, that, or maybe call it year three? How would you, would you say two violations within one year?
Well, I, I could say that, but if, if, I like the discussion, I surely like when we are able to discuss this because you bring up things that we don't think of beforehand. My concern is that, that we leave it up to the council so that they can make the final decision, but I could go along either way with it.
Okay. That's up to you, how you'd like to word it, if you'd like it, um, two over the course of their operation, or two violations within a particular year, or two within two years?
Let me tell you, they tell us that, that we're not going to smell anything. This is what they tell us. They show us the facts from manufacturers that we're not going to smell anything, so I'd say two within a year, and then, and if, if within six months, you have the two, you have the opportunity to get rid of it.
Very fair. Okay.
So if I might just reread the condition as further revised?
But if anybody else, excuse me, where are you? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, if you would like me to reread the condition as it's been further revised, then I can do so.
I love the way you make revisions, certainly.
If the proposed use has two violations of the City Las Vegas odor, Las Vegas odor ordinance within one year, the use may be required to cease, and the special use permit can be revoked at a separate public hearing.
Yes. Now, if there's anybody else, and I know this is very questionable, so if there's anybody, you know, we have so few little time that we can, I knew she had a question down there.
So it's not really a question. I just, um, you know, as we, because, um, just on Monday, I spent half a day touring the Corridor of Hope, and we have a very big homeless problem. And as we look at the pictures that were in front of the proposed building, uh, there were homeless folks sitting there, and as we look at other businesses that will develop there, and I personally actually know the applicant, Mr. James, and the aesthetics on the building, I am expecting to be very nice, and with the security there, I do believe that they will give us, the City of Las Vegas, a hand in helping with the homeless right downtown on First Street. So, you know, I think I, I'm, I'm with you, Councilwoman Tarkanian, that we, we have to try.
It's so nice to have someone with you. Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any other comments?
Since we're going down this path, I didn't hear any assurances about parking or that the commercial access to the building would be restricted to the rear. And then I have two concerns that I'd like to just say because you pointed out that you didn't think we would move beyond industrial when we've already approved a restaurant right next door. It's already established and already had money invested in it, so we already are moving down that path. So I'm not sure what we tell that restaurant owner in regards to this, and I'm also concerned about what value a council vote has on a, a vision statement. We, we approved the vision for the Northwest. Does that mean by us not supporting a vision that those vision statements are no longer important to us as a council? So I just have those concerns. The message we're sending to the community, if they want to, if they wanted to invest in here now, I would, if I were them, I wonder if they may be questioning that. And then the, the restaurant owner next door that came before this body and bought into our twenty-four-five plan, what are we saying to that person? So I just have those concerns to, and, and to share.
And I think those are valid concerns. I think that we could make a condition that all the business shall be conducted at the rear, which is what you've, you've said to us.
As far as deliveries, but supposing, the consultant wants to walk in, or Mr. James wants to walk in, or someone else does, but as far as deliveries, we've, we've made that representation. We've made that representation. It would be in the back.
We could say that, and you wouldn't have, uh, this is not a dispensary where people are coming in all the time.
Exactly.
So I, I think we could put a condition that all activities related, related to conducting the business would be in the rear condition.
Yes, ma'am.
Our little, uh, yes.
Thank you. If I could speak to those conditions, which are getting a little bit tighter and tighter as we go along, and you'll find yourself tightening, all other businesses too, because we never said to anybody in this area, first of all, we never, in the four years we debated this, we never said you could not have it there. So reasonable investors are entitled to look at a place and say, this is allowed, I'd like to invest. We really have a hard time if we are, we're gonna create a hard time for investors if we then say, we don't really like that business. Now, I know this is a different kind of business, but if it was a carpentry shop or something like that, we would say, you're in the Centennial Plan, and there is no parking restriction. There is no minimum parking requirement. So that's number one, that this owner has in mind our pre-existing rules, which they have to live with. We can't create rules that are unfair or perhaps beat our expectations for one particular business and not do it for the others. So we, we have to be very careful not to get so prohibitive on things.
But Mr. Coffin?
Parking is not, should not be an issue because.
Well, where are they going to park, even the business next door for delivery?
Exactly, exactly. Where's the restaurant? They're gonna have more people than that.
You know, we drove by there a few times, and where, where are you going to park if you don't do it in the back?
Mayor Protem.
I don't think they're against that condition, by the way.
Well, but Mayor Protem, we can't enforce a condition on one business and then give them a legal standing, uh, that they had been treated differently than any other business in the Centennial Plan. We have voted for hundreds of businesses in the Centennial Plan that don't have a minimum parking requirement because the advanced vision of the city includes, uh, no parking requirements, although they are getting, they are getting there. We are getting there, and I'm having a study done on it. But in fact, so to, to create a new condition, which, you know, precedent would be unfair to any one particular business. This one just happens to have an unusual property to it, so that's, that's.
I, I think, Mr. Coffin, you, you make a good comment of what you believe in, and I think, Mr. Soroka, if he wants to add that on, and it's a condition. Mr. Soroka, if he wants to add that on, and it's a condition agreeable, we could make a vote on that that way. I do want to say one thing about the restaurant. I can't find one single activity where they've, you know, you've said they've moved towards forming the restaurant and spent money on it already, and I can't find any record of where they have done that. But maybe if, does anybody know of any that they have?
Well, Your Honor, if I could address you as Your Honor. We have approved a restaurant with no parking maximum. They are waived. So that's the neighbor, right there. So if we put a limit on parking on the neighbor, you've created an unfair situation, which will leave us open for litigation. I think that's unnecessary.
Plus, we're going to have less customers, if I may say, than the restaurants could have. No customers, really.
It is probably, we're opening up a can of worms here you don't want to get involved in, violating our own plan, which Councilman Soroka has pointed out, sometimes you've got to stick to your vision.
And I'll concede that parking point.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, as far as the question of who enters the front door, I think we just say deliveries occur through the rear entrance, which is where the alley is, where they have said they would do.
That's agreeable.
Well, we can move for you to make a motion. I just wanted to go on the record so you would know before the motion, that I cannot vote on it unless it has that condition.
Oh, it has, and I have mine.
That it will be stopped. And that's something that I feel sort of helps us both ways, and gives us an understanding of information, you know, I'm a teacher. You've got to get that information here in the back, which you're going to do.
The information you've conveyed to me, Mayor Protem, is that you want a condition in there that indicates that it's two strikes and you're out, or two strikes and a hearing.
Two strikes and a hearing.
Yeah, you, you...
Within the year.
Yeah.
Within a year, yes.
And that's the main condition, other than what has been printed and agenized. I'm going to make that motion.
Wait a second. I think we had one more council person.
I'm going to agree with you. I just want to just clarify, Councilwoman Soroka said that in the beginning that staff had recommended denial, but staff, I believe, had recommended approval on this. Am I correct?
I mentioned that the Planning Commission had recommended.
Oh, okay, sorry. I misheard you.
After their hearing scrutiny, yes.
Well, it's not in my ward, and so it's going to be up to Mr. Coffin to make the motion.
Oh, I'll play hell for it, of course, Your Honor. It comes with the job. We'll see what happens. It's on you out there. You've got a lot at stake. License, you've got, you don't want to have a black mark, so you're going to keep it clean smelling like Chanel. Subject to the conditions which have been stated, which is, I think, in record sufficiently. Do you want to reread it again?
Yes, sir.
All right.
If the proposed use has two violations of the City Las Vegas odor ordinance within one calendar year, the use may be required to cease, and a special use permit can be revoked at a separate public hearing.
The motion contains this condition. The motion for approval of item 65 contains this condition, as stated further by our staff. That is my motion.
Can we have the applicant's agreement to that?
Agreed to that. Would you give your agreement to that?
Agreed.
Say that again. I didn't hear that.
Did we agree? I don't know about commercial operations happening in the back of the facility.
Only deliver, my understanding of the motion was just deliveries.
That's their...
That's all the business is, isn't it?
Well, I'm saying, I'd rather just call it deliveries, just in case. I don't know if an attorney walks in, it's business, or an insurance man comes in, it's business. I'm just saying deliveries.
How does that sound to you?
It sounds, you know, the idea is that pickup and deliveries, drop off and pickups would be from the back, not people coming in and out of the building.
Right, no, that's my understanding as well, Councilman.
So, so do you want to have within the drop off and pickup deliveries, or just deliveries?
Just deliveries should do, Mayor Protem.
Okay, all right. You have that, Mr. Coffin? About deliveries?
Deliveries and pickups seem reasonable to be conducted in the rear of the business, which is likely where we would ask all other businesses to do loading and unloading.
And they have agreed to that condition?
Yeah, they have agreed to that. It's part of the motion. Let's make sure it's in there.
So I may clarify, there's a specific condition for that. Would read as, delivery shall be conducted at the rear of the building?
Yes.
I believe that's what Mr. Soroka wants, yes.
Especially if he's going to support it, I would certainly want to have his, it sounds to me like he's going to support this, and that's why we're supporting his amendment. Thank you.
I think this council, since I've been on it the longest of anybody here now, we've really tried to work together. We've really tried to respect the views of the person in whose area the application exists, and to get all views and everything on here. And you know, of course, you'd have to follow all the other rules of, that are there already as far as the marijuana industry is concerned.
And I don't want to mislead anyone. I still have significant concerns about our 2045 vision and our, what we have done to a previous approval of a restaurant next door. And my understanding, I haven't looked up the records, is that purchasing the property has already been conducted by the previous applicant for the restaurant.
The ownership of it? This I could not find. So maybe, I just, I could not find it. Maybe planning or somebody could find it, but I could not find where they own that property and have purchased it. That was one of the concerns I had also, and that's why I went into it so deeply, because I didn't want to hurt them. But I do not find where they have bought the property. And that's what I meant by the movement forward. I think they have one of those where you can see what happens, you know, if you do it or not, or you have the right to purchase it, but they have not done that. As far as I know. If anybody knows differently, please. I have nothing against the applicant. I think they're good people and everything, but I just want to make sure. So, would you make your motion again, please, including what Mr. Soroka wants, so we all know what we're voting on?
Couldn't we just play back the tape?
And you can have our Planning Department read it for you, if you wish?
Well, if I opened my mouth and somebody moved my lips, but the words came from the Planning Director, I think I would be very happy. Would you be happy? Would you be happy, Mayor Protem? Please restate my motion.
The proposed conditions of approval to be added to SUP 71037. First being, if the proposed use has two violations of the City Las Vegas odor ordinance within one calendar year, the use may be required to cease, and a special use permit can be revoked at a separate public hearing. Second condition would be, delivery shall be conducted at the rear of the building.
It sounds right. That is the motion.
That is your motion. So then can we have a vote on the motion by the council?
Push.
Post, of course. All right. We have a motion of one, two, three, four, four, two against, and one not being able to vote. So the motion passes. All right, we can move on to the next item on our agenda.
We have three more. We have three more items related.
We're on item 46 now?
Boy, you have 66 as well.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, but that was on 65, so we need to do 66 separately.
Yeah, and then the other two.
All right. That was on 65. We do not have to do 46, which I have right after it in my...
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, thank you.
Uh-huh, I was right. Good.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Item number 46, which trailed the item we just had presented. Discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment license cultivation Boulevard Medical LLC, doing business as Boulevard Medical LLC at 714 First Street. Mark A. James, managing member, Ward Three, Mr. Coffin. Could we have a presentation?
For the record, Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street. First, a clarification. So that approval that we just voted on was for items 65 and 66?
No, just for 65, then she's going to 47, then we'll do 66 after.
So again, for item 65, since we were fortunate enough to get a special use permit, we think we should now get our compliance to get approved as well.
Skip, Mr. McKellen?
Mayor Protem, I move for approval.
Well, wait a minute. She needs to make her comment.
First of all, I got to say this much, that, Council, you understand what's happened here. We posted that these two items should trail 66, not 65. So we got to do 66. If it is necessary...
Well, see, I'm just a mayor, I'm only a Protem, so I just follow the book.
I just want to, because it's going to be a contentious thing.
Let's hear from the city clerk.
One is our legal tellers and our clerk.
The city clerk.
Hi, Stacey Campbell, Chief Deputy City Clerk. It was adjourned for 46 to be heard after 65. Yes.
I did it right. Oh, good, okay. Here we go then. Discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment license cultivation Boulevard Medical LLC, doing business as Boulevard Medical LLC at 714 First Street. Mark A. James, managing member, Ward Three, Coffin. Do we have any comments from the applicant? Do we have any comments then from Mary?
Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. The application meets minimum requirements for a compliance permit. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. They must secure and/or maintain a current state provisional registration certificate or license. Two, plans must be reviewed and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. And three, the compliance permit will be set to expire November 1st, 2018. Thank you.
And then, are there any comments from the public?
I don't think we have a public comment on this.
I don't, this is not in my book, but just to be sure, I'm going to ask. All right then, there are no comments from the public? Is there a motion, Councilman Coffin?
I move for approval, subject to all the conditions.
All right. He moves for approval, subject to all conditions. Please vote on the motion. And post.
We have to go to 66.
All right, the vote again is four, two, one, and passes. We can now move to item number 66. We're no little question on that, evidently. All right. SUP 71038, applicant Boulevard Medical LLC, owner GE 714 LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,819 square foot marijuana production facility used at 714 South First Street, CM Commercial Industry Zone, and it's Ward Three, Coffin. And do we have any comments from the applicant?
No comments.
All right, then is there any from the Planning Commission?
Mayor Protem, the same report applies to this item, as was read into item 65.
All right, and then, and so the Planning Commission recommended denial, the staff recommends approval. Subject to conditions, this is a public hearing, I now declare it open. Any comments from applicants or from public? Mr. Lowenstein has already commented. Is there a motion, Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval of item 66, subject to the same conditions that were placed in item 65.
And Mayor Protem, the applicant agrees with those conditions?
Yes, and the applicant approved.
The applicant does agree to those conditions.
All right, then please vote on the motion. And post. And the motion again carries with four votes for, two against, and one on not being able to vote. Now we'll hear the related item number 47, which was trailed from earlier today. Item 47 is the discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment license production Boulevard Medical LLC, doing business as Boulevard Medical LLC at 714 First Street. Mark A. James is the managing member, and this is Ward Three, Mr. Coffin. And do we have any comments from the applicant?
No comments.
And do we have any comments from Mary?
Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director?
Sorry, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. The application meets minimum requirements for a compliance permit. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. One, they must secure and/or maintain a current state provisional registration certificate or license. Two, plans must be reviewed and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. And three, the compliance permit will be set to expire November 1st, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Councilman Coffin?
Yes, Your Honor, I move for approval of item 47, subject to the conditions expressed by planning license.
Please vote on the motion. And the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you.
And now we move to items where the mayor can be here. Item number 67. Is the mayor going to come back in here? Okay, I'll take it then. We have, we have four here, all right. Item number 5067 is what I have next. VAR 71212, on a request for variance to allow a 39-foot building height, where 35 feet is the maximum allowed, an eight-foot wide landscape buffer along a portion of the south property line where 15 feet is required, and five parking landscape islands where 11 are required. Item number 67. And Mayor, I'm so happy that you're here.
Oh, but keep reading, finish up, you're doing so well.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, I was on the phone, I'm sorry.
No, we know you have other things you have to do there.
Thanks. You're reading so well.
Well, the next I have is 68. Is that what I should move into? SDR 71213, on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed two-story, 36,000 square foot addition to an existing 54,935 square foot public or private school primary. The applicant owner is a school board of trustees on 8.07 acres at 4,000 El Parque Avenue, CV Civic Zone. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of both items. These are in Ward One, Tarkanian. And our public hearings, which I now declare open, if there's anyone from the public that wants to make a comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I will then ask, is the applicant present to present?
Yes, we are. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers. I am Gabrielle Greer with Clark County School District, 1180 Military Tribute Place in Henderson. And we are here today to present on the school addition at the current Vegas Verde Elementary School. And here is Chris Fenton with Gensler Architecture to talk about the specifics of the project.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Chris Fenton, 383 Howard Hughes Parkway, Suite 650-89169. As Gabby mentioned, we are doing an 18-room classroom addition to the side of Vegas Verde School. It's to replace the portables out of there today, to give a more permanent space, and we are increasing the, we're adding the classrooms for, to bring the school up to the existing other school standards. It involves some parking lot additions, as well as a bus drop-off in the area.
Mr. Lowenstein, why, this is a public school. In the past, do all public schools within the city come in front of city council for additions and parking lot changes and landscaping?
Madam Mayor, during, based on the scope of the project, they're still held to doing a site development review. Some may be administrative applications. In this particular case, the scope is large enough that it warranted a public hearing. The items being a variance in a site development review have the potential to be final action at Planning Commission unless we're requested a review by council, and in this particular case, it came forward before the city council.
Interesting, because I remember changes at Clark and Bonanza. I don't ever recall them coming in front of us.
In the past, they didn't when they were renovating, but I think this is part of a different program they have, and maybe they decided to come in front of us.
Mayor, if I could help on this, we have more coming. We have proposals to increase the size of Hewittson, I believe, and Crestwood. Well, the common factor with many of these schools is that they're in older parts of town. Even El Parque, it's older now. And so the neighborhoods have, in some cases, increased the density. We've got larger populations trying to serve and, you know, serve them through an overcrowded school. So it's contemplated that we would have to have some sort of approval authority when they're going to be essentially changing the shape or the altitude, the height of a building in a neighborhood. That's what all of these are. Whereas high schools are on their own seriously large property, the older neighborhoods have nice schools right up against the houses. So that's why we need to do an S... So that's why we need to do an SDR on those.
'Cause I do recall that when schools have been abandoned property, Clark County School District, the charter schools have come in occupied because they're an arm of the school district or the Department of Education, and I can understand why they would come, but I just hadn't recalled specifically, even when we've had modulators that have been in use, that when they convert over to permanent structures, that they've been in front of us. I mean, I think it's good, I was just curious as to why.
And Madam Mayor? If I might say, in a way, when you come for an approval of these, this much of an addition to a school, you're affecting a lot of things, Mayor, that you support, which is better education. And I just wonder if maybe the school district, and maybe they can't afford it now, but in the research, it shows that the larger the school, the less academic progress of the students. I always used to think the larger the class would be the greatest influence, 'cause I taught in a classroom with fifty-two first graders one time, I sure didn't do as well as I did when I had twenty-six. Oh, that's what I felt. But the research shows, and most of the schools in the United States follow the rule, that if you have smaller schools, you have a greater academic achievement and fewer social problems, because in the larger schools, they lose the community feel, and they form into little gangs or groups. I'm just stating this now, just to say that it might be good, because it affects not just the school, it will affect what's happening to all our citizens that we represent, and I know how you care about that, so I just wanted to mention it.
Well, in particular, it's the one near me on Oki, so I'm very familiar with it, and have talked with the students and been out there so many times, that I just, I was curious that it has come before us, so I don't see any problems. Did you do the public hearing on this? We have not. Okay, was there, well, let me hold off first. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this, these issues, sixty-seven or sixty-eight? Okay, I'll close public comment. Now, since you were answering my question, did you have something that was more pithy you would like to say in regard to this improvement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff finds the proposed classroom and parking lot additions to the Vegas Verde's Elementary School are in conformance with the policies and objectives of the school facilities element of the Las Vegas two thousand and twenty master plan, and are compatible with the existing school facilities and surrounding neighborhoods, and therefore recommending approval. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, Councilwoman, let's do sixty-seven first.
All right, first of all, I'm having trouble with this button, it's going off and on, but I did want to say you have an absolutely excellent principal there. He has done a magnificent job, and I know he works with other schools because he's so good, but we're very fortunate at this school that we have such a fine principal. I would move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on agenda, item sixty-seven. Please vote, and then please post. And Councilman Anthony had to be excused. And that motion carries, let's go on to sixty-eight. What's your timeline for delivering the product?
The schedule is to have it built by the end of summer.
Excellent. And so are you doing it while we're in operation during the school year then, of course?
Correct, yes, it's, we do, that's why it's on the side of the property, so we can fence that off from the children while they build it this spring, this winter and spring.
Right. Okay, did we, sixty-eight, oh, motion from you, please.
I move to approve.
Thank you very much. So motion to approve on sixty-eight.
And I'd also like to add that your new school, Rick Spell, is magnificent, absolutely magnificent.
Thank you.
And that motion carries. But what I've seen is the islands that have really helped with the traffic on Oki there, the islands that were put in in Ward One, so that really has been helpful. So good luck, we'll look forward to the ribbon-cutting on your new property.
And one last thing, Mayor, we did have some complaints, and I spoke with the people, the representatives in the school district about the, a little bit more landscaping for those individuals who had complaints. I don't think it would cost much money, and the school district did agree to do that. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll buffer it up a little bit better for the neighbors.
Fine, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, we're on to agenda, item sixty-nine, SUP seven-one-two-seven-three, public hearing, applicant owner Venza Bracken, for a possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential rental use with a waiver to allow a hundred and fifty-two-foot distance separation from similar use where six-sixty feet is required at three-oh-nine Arnold, R-one, single-family residential zone, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Planning Commission recommends denial, and staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? That does not bode well.
No.
Okay, may I ask a question before you go into your diatribe here? I know that, I think I asked Mr. Gerbic, but I'm not sure. When we're looking at the short-term rentals, and there is a two- or four-lane road between them, so ones, on one side of, you know, like a Sahara or Charleston or an Oki, and you have a big, or Martin Luther King, and so the distance from one side to the other is less than the six-sixty required, and I think Mary was in the conversation, where are we getting with that? It doesn't seem to make sense. It certainly does make sense in a confined, but when you have a major thoroughfare, which is less distance than the six-sixty, are we putting that into something? Does that have to become a motion, a resolution, a discussion?
Madam Mayor, currently, the ordinance allows anybody that's within the six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation requirement to apply for a waiver of that distance separation as part of the special use permit. So regardless of right-of-way, or it's an additional subdivision, or any of that, they still have the distance separation to conform to, but if they can't meet that separation requirement, they can apply for the waiver through the special use permit process.
And in the special use process, is that, is there a consideration by staff when looking at it, that, my gosh, there's a major thoroughfare here between the appropriate distances?
As part of our analysis, we took a look at all of those different considerations as part of it.
But Mayor, that's not specifically within the code. I know it is for taverns, I know we have the distance separation between tavern, and we do, and you do consider the fact that if a major thoroughfare is between the two taverns, you take that in consideration. It's not specifically within our code, but you're able to take that in consideration if you'd like.
Okay.
If you'd like it in our code, we need to make an amendment to the code.
So if I could just clarify one other thing. The taverns have a non-wavable minimum in distance separation unless you have certain criteria, such as a hundred-foot right-of-way that separates the use. That is not the case for the short-term rental. You can ask for the waiver of the distance separation without having any intervening criteria.
So would that be something...
But if you wanted a similar type of situation with short-term rentals whereby you can, you could consider, I guess, more of a wavable condition to have that thoroughfare between, we could actually add that to the code if you'd like.
What I'd like is to have the ward council persons get their input. Can you just, as staff?
Yes.
I'm asking you to go to each council person to find out, when they have a major thoroughfare, do they want that consideration to be part of it, or they're fine leaving it as it is? So if you'll make those points, yes, please.
Very good point that you're bringing forward, and I've already directed staff to work with me on that, to bring an ordinance forward.
Let's do it across.
So that, so that the same language that's in the tavern separation, that it will be the same as short-term rental, because I think that would be significant, because that's one sure way that, one, it will be unwavable as far as the six-hundred-and-sixty-foot distance separation for short-term rental, that they can't apply just as a tavern unless there's a demarcation of that hundred-foot right-of-way to divide the two. And so I would, wanted to mirror the same language as the tavern ordinance moving forward, and I've spoken with Peter about that, and I'm not sure who else, I'm not sure if I had a conversation with Mary, but I know for sure I spoke with Peter in relation to setting that up. I'm sorry? Brad Gerbic? Oh, okay, it was Peter and Brad Gerbic who I was communicating with.
'Cause I just think it needs the exploration, knowing in my neighborhood, yeah, I'm not allowed to vote in my neighborhood, of course, but in my neighborhood, there's a short-term rental request on one side of Oki, and Oki is four lanes, pretty wide, and then the other property that is a short-term rental already in existence is on the south side of Oki. So they probably, there's just no reason to have that six-hundred-and-sixty foot, not that I'm in favor or not in favor of short-term rentals, but it just seems when you have a major thoroughfare, if you had an applicant on one side, the east side of Martin Luther King, and then you had one on the west side of Martin Luther King, my God, they're just like different worlds.
Yeah.
So just along as you're investigating and if all states...
They're doing more than just investigating, they actually should be moving forward to bring that before council. But the question that I do have for you, Brian, is for those applications already in the system, if in fact, that, for example, the ordinance happens before we approve those that are currently in the system, what happens to those?
You can currently make that finding if you believe that that hundred-foot right-of-way makes a difference in that distance separation, that they're not affected by one another. You can currently make that determination now and waive that six-hundred-and-sixty-foot distance separation between them.
Okay, but in the case...
We just wanted it more plainly stated in the code that that's a part of that wavability, is to have that hundred-foot right-of-way not counted.
Right.
But you can currently do that now.
Okay.
To your, Madam Mayor, to Councilman Barlow's question, what happens to the existing ones that are approved within the distance separation, and they basically become legal?
That are coming through the system right now that have not been approved by way of council?
They're prior to the adoption of the ordinance, therefore, they would move out forward as is under this current ordinance, and if approved, or any previous existing ones with adoption of a new ordinance, potentially would become legal non-conforming uses.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I was saying it's a wavable condition, six-sixty is wavable, and isn't it...
No, the question, let me be more specific. We have current applications on abeyance right now within our system. If the ordinance passes before those abeyance items are approved, what happens to the abeyance items after the ordinance is approved? Will they, will they be grandfathered?
Are the ones that are obeyed within the six-sixty of another...
Yes.
Already operating them?
Yes.
Okay.
And if the ordinance gets approved before they are approved before this body...
Right.
What happens to those abeyances? Are they grandfathered, or are they captured in the net of the new ordinance?
I guess it depends on when they're heard and when the new ordinance is passed. Some of them will be grandfathered, and others will have to follow the new ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think I closed the public hearing, but if not, anybody else? No, I'm closing the public hearing. And any comments from anyone else? Nope. Okay, Councilman Barlow.
I personally don't know what to do with this item, because the applicant asked for this item to be obeyed because he was traveling out of state, and...
You can obey it again, Councilman, if you'd like.
Yeah, let me go ahead and just obey it again to the next city council meeting, and we'll try and reach out to the applicant. So my motion would be to obey this to the next city council meeting, which is November fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
November one-five, that'll be my motion at this time.
Okay, there's a motion to obey this item to the fifteenth of November. So please vote, and please post. And the motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to, my goodness, look at us. We are into seventy, set the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I'd instruct our city, I love that, I would please instruct our city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abeyance.
Thank you.
Okay, now, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, please, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. There you are. Hi there.
Hi, my name is Diane Hale. I'm the owner of the Safety Institute Building at eight-twenty South Valley View. Unfortunately, the Navy called me just before this meeting where I had to be here, and when they have a contract, you end up taking the call. So I came in at number sixty-five instead of sixty-four, and I was told that it was denied. I have been working on the landscaping for three years. We put in in October of last year the request to do desert, zero-scape. This is, I wanted to put in some pictures to show you at least, you know, what is the change that we've done, because I have followed, I personally put in all the plants, I've been monitoring, I've been trimming the drought-tolerant ones, which I haven't been watering anything extra. But we went from dead trees to weeds to double or triple the number of plants. Now, I realize that you guys, I wasn't here to give my viewpoint and that it was denied, but I'm asking you to please put it back and maybe reopen it and revote it based on the facts I'm gonna present. This is what the area currently looks like. I'm only fertilizing and watering the cactus as needed in the spring. For the most part, we get plenty of rain for them. And the fact of the matter actually is, we conform to the area, we, all of our plants are SNWA drought-tolerant, they're all listed as bulletproof. In fact, I personally went out and selected plants that were native, with exception of the Texas or the sage plants, which I found out evidently will grow with just seeds dropped by the birds. I have recently met with Jorge Cervantes, discussed it with him, and he came out and asked that we put in two more sage plants, which just means I'm gonna have to trim two more trees because they grow to be five or six foot in diameter, and that's without any water. These tree, or these bushes that I put in, sage ones, actually grew in my front yard as volunteers, I dug them up, I put them in the front of my building. But as you can see, they're all SNWA drought-tolerant. We went from ten plants that were on the nineteen-eighty-seven-approved landscape plan, which were medium to low water use, to all low-water-use drought-tolerant plants that require no watering. I mean, I was surprised, no matter what I do with the sage plants, trim them down to like rosebushes' height, they come right back into four or five feet, and they do flower two or three times a year. So I'm asking, so I don't spend more time on this.
Okay, you know, you are so kind, you have already presented to us and done it so eloquently.
Thank you.
I can assure you, I just asked Councilwoman Mayor Protem here, is her door open to you? And she said absolutely. So I'd highly recommend you go back into the conversation, because if she does one thing for one, it has to be the same. You cannot set precedent just for one person, it has to be consistent. However, you probably have some concepts and ideas, and so I've just asked her, is your door open? Would you be willing to continue to meet? She said absolutely.
It is, and I would like to add, Mayor, that I met with Jorge Cervantes yesterday, and those bushes that you said are drought-tolerant and so forth, they're not water-absent tolerant, they're scraggly. Even Jorge, or even he said they were scraggly. Now, let me just finish, please. This is the entrance to the Springs Preserve. And I just, I just want to say to you that we have to take that whole area and work with all of the people that are there. We're going to try and help you, but I can't give you an approval on cacti that you see right in the middle there that don't look so hot, and then, you know, demand that the others do something else, or expect that the others do something else. You are in a very key area, and we want to help you, we'll do everything we can. We've already given you ninety thousand dollars from the city to help you. I helped you get that money, and so I just want you to know, it's always open.
Okay, and what I'd like to do, if I may, I'm gonna ask our legal counsel, Mr. Scott here, to make comment.
Mayor Protem, if you wanted to keep, I guess, the discussions going with this applicant, you may want to reopen and reconsider your denial of that application and maybe obey it?
I don't want to do that.
Okay.
I don't want to do that.
Therefore...
I think she may have to wait for another year in order for her to re-imply for this waiver, so...
Yes, but in the meantime, we think we're going to be able to help her get some water there.
Okay.
Okay. I need to make one point about that.
That's what we're working on now for that whole area.
Great, Councilwoman, thank you.
One, I have three years of demonstration that we don't need water with these plants. Two, for, I'm... Two, I'm over seven tenths of a mile away from the Springs Preserve. I don't have the same resources that the Las Vegas Water District has on the east side, or on part of the west side, which I found out from Jorge, is a water district. Secondly, I have already applied for my lead platinum. I lose five points automatically by having irrigation. By that arbitrary decision, I go from lead platinum to gold. And I designed the building with all the extra energy and water efficiency features specifically to achieve lead platinum. By deciding that, you have just allowed me to fail, and a goal I've worked three years for. Secondly, I do realize, Lois, I understand your viewpoint. I know that you, as well as some of the members of the planning commission, don't care for cactus. There are those of us who love the cactus. I have five neighbors in my development who thought my landscaping is fine. Cactus do flower, they are going to continue to get bigger and bigger, even if I do not water them. I even noticed last week or two weeks ago, somebody from the Water District, who we thought were snooping around on our property, coming to check out our plants. Maybe I have more knowledge on these plants, but that's because I've been here for 25 years in the city. I have grown these plants on three different homes, and I know what works.
Well, we thank you.
Providing water isn't helpful.
I thank you, but I do encourage you to meet with the Councilwoman and go further, go through that door. And just, it is, it is not going to be pulled back, as I understand it. But appreciate your coming down and continuing to work on this, and I believe her mayor, her door will be open to you. So please do make that appointment. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close this and move on to number 72, which is, "Councilmember recognition comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action." I know they're, all our council always loves to have agenda items, and we're going to start with Mayor Protem, you go first.
I'd like to say that in Ward 1, the Mirabelli Community Center is putting the sea back in community by hosting a fun festival this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Residents are invited for music and carnival games such as Pop a Pumpkin, a Pumpkin Patch Walk, Carmel Apples, and many more things related to the fall season. Mirabelli is located at 6200 6200 Hargrove Avenue. There is a small entry fee for the event, it is $5 for a family, up to four, and $1 for each additional person. There's always a lot of fun at Mirabelli. They work very, very hard, and we often have people come from the county to participate in their activities. So I hope city people will also look into going there. For more information, please call 702-229-6359. And then we have several meetings coming up, which are sort of in cooperation with Scott Adams, talking about developing the stronger neighborhoods. On Tuesday, November 7th, I will be meeting with residents from the Artesian Heights and Royal Crest subdivisions to discuss neighborhood issues and the reactivation of a neighborhood association for the area. On Wednesday, November 8th, I will be meeting with the Torrey Pines neighborhood to discuss traffic issues and other neighborhood concerns. And on Thursday, November 9th, the city's planning department and I will be meeting with the Scotch 80 neighborhood. Finally, on Thursday, November 16th, I will meet with the Rancho Spring neighborhood to discuss neighborhood issues and reactivation of their association. I hope everybody who's listening, who lives in those areas, does plan to attend. Because if they don't, we say, you can complain all you want, we're not going to listen to you as well as people who attend. So for more information, please call my office, 702-229-6405.
Thank you. And if you need to leave, go ahead. Councilwoman Soroka.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming up this Saturday on November 4th, we'll wait for the slide just for a moment. We're hustling, thank you. Who's that guy? All right.
There you are, all shredded up. There you were. They took you and they shredded you.
They did. They did, but we're going to recover from that, because this is a good thing in this case. Thank you, Mayor, for that, yes. This Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, we're going to have the opportunity to shred your documents to protect your ID. Now, we know we have that electronic ID theft problem, but we also know this can be very important with our paper documents as well. Please come out and take advantage of this opportunity, and we'll be there from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Veterans Memorial Leisure Center in the parking lot right adjacent to Palo Verde High School. Next slide, please. And then we have, please follow me on social media, but we have a couple big events coming up. Please come, you can join me at the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, starting at 10:00 a.m. And then that weekend is also the Nellis Air Show, celebrating the Air Force's 70th anniversary. The air shows will be performed on Saturday and Sunday, so we'll be out there Sunday so we can get both events. Thank you very much, and Ward 2, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And my gentleman to my left, who's busy doing architectural design.
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, taking place in Ward 5, Thursday, November 2nd, Coffee with the Councilman. Please join me, that is tomorrow, for Coffee with the Councilman at Starbucks for a conversation regarding the community business, neighborhood association questions or items that you would like to discuss in general. I will be at Starbucks, located at 1925 North Martin Luther King Boulevard, right at the corner of Lake Mead. So for more information, please contact my office at 229-5443. Secondly, on that same Thursday, the Dia de los Muertos will host a traditional celebration of the Latin American culture at the Sammy Davis Jr. Festival Plaza in Lorenzi Park. There will be a host of events, to include dancing, mariachi, face painting, food vendors, and arts and craft. This is a family event, and all are welcome. So for more information, please contact 229-4924. And that's Thursday, November 2nd as well. On Saturday, November 11th, is Veterans Day Parade, so please come out and let's support our veterans. The Veterans Day Parade will take place this Saturday, November 11th, at 10:00 a.m. here in downtown Las Vegas, starting on Fourth Street and Hoover. So the event is free and open to the public, and should last approximately two hours. For more information on the Veterans Day Parade, you may log on to their website at www.veteransparade.com for all the details. Foodie Nation is back under the Fremont Street Experience. The 12th Annual Foodie Nation Cultural Fest will take place at the Fremont Street Experience at the corner of Third and Ogden from 11:00 a.m. until midnight. For more information, and if you're interested in becoming a vendor or sponsor, please call This is a wonderful event. Each and every year, the Foodie Nation Cultural Fest, under Fremont Street Experience, November 18th and 19th, from 11:00 a.m. until midnight. And of course, the Historic West Side School, located at West Washington and D Street, has professional office space and retail, as well as a cafe space, open for those who are looking for an opportunity to expand their business or create a new business. A multimillion-dollar renovation has taken place with a variety of upgrades, to include a modern office space while the exterior has been carefully restored. This is a historical site, and we would love for those who are looking to expand their business to come into this location. And so if you are interested, please contact Julie Quisenberry out of our Economic and Urban Development Department, and she may be reached at 229-6551 for more information. And of course, you may always follow me or stay informed with all the events and matters happening in Ward 5 by following me on Twitter and Facebook. And if you would like to receive a Ward 5 newsletter, please visit the Ward 5 website at www.lasvegasnevada.gov/ward5, or just send me an email, or you may call my office direct at 229-5443. Thank you.
Well, I'm saving the best to last, because I know there's a special there. So Councilman, even though you're the best, Councilman, Councilman Hoffman, are one of the very best, you go ahead, please.
Oh, I see, you want me to go now?
Yes, please.
Well, thank you very much. I could hardly wait. Tomorrow, I'm going to be seeing you, Your Honor, because tomorrow morning's a big deal here in Las Vegas, no matter where you live, and I hope all the council members will take it upon themselves to say, you know, you're invited. We need you to come over to the corner of 28th and Bonanza, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, that's Thursday, because that's where we break ground on the newest library in the valley. And this is a project that started a number of years ago, when actually, we didn't realize, the Ward 3 office didn't realize that we owned a land underneath a school, which was Sunrise Acres, an old, old school, at the location of Sunrise Near Eastern. Well, it turns out that the school district had no plans for the property. It had to come back to the city, but we had to request it. So nobody moves very fast until we decided to move fast, because at the very same time, our representatives, who are some members of the city staff, are on the library district, and Felipe Ortiz from my office sits on the board, and he realized, wait a minute, we need land on the east side for a new library. This land, the school, is on six acres of land. We could use that. And so talks began. I consulted with our staff, particularly our newly-mended city manager, Scott Adams, but three years ago, he wasn't that position. He was just doing his brilliance behind the scenes. And he took what looked like a simple transaction and made it more complicated in order to make it happen. Because he knew that the library district wanted to move, but he also knew that the Natural History Museum wanted to move. These are both on Las Vegas Boulevard North. So a deal was made to transfer the land from the school district to the state, to the city. Then, in exchange for that, we transferred six acres to the library district. But wait a minute, there's more, because then the housing authority recognized the need to increase housing on the east side of town, in what we affectionately call the Donut Hole for Services. At 28th and Bonanza, there is a great big empty lot owned by the housing authority, eight and a half acres. So all of a sudden, that became our shift. So we decided, let's go for that. So we traded that land to the housing authority, and we got enough land to build a library as big as anything that's been built on the west side of town. So on Summerlin or West Sahara, you have a new neighbor coming for us. It's the biggest thing that's really happened on the east side of town in many years. It's a truly overdue investment. This will be a modern library with all the facilities available to anybody in this valley. Tomorrow morning, we're going to, we're going to break that ground, and so, you know, bring groundbreaking shoes, Your Honor. You're going to be speaking, I'm honored to follow you, along with other people in the community. There'll be school performances by three elementary schools from Ward 3. Pastor Benny Jacques will be giving the invocation, and we'll have presentation of colors by Rancho's, Rancho High's, Color Guard, and the pledge. And we'll have a lot of people there, because a lot of people should be part of this. It was really something. It was as complicated as anything I think Scott Adams could do on Wall Street, that we pulled in tax credits, we pulled in a little bit of city money, but in all reality, a lot of it was a transaction, mostly funded by the library district with their bonding capacity. But it couldn't have happened without literally a four-way land transaction. So, you know, I don't want to speak too much about that, because you've got remarks that you're going to make tomorrow. But I did want to emphasize to my colleagues that they all ought to come, because this is something that we're all very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our lovely new Councilwoman.
Can I go down there and-
You can do whatever you want.
What?
As long as we can get out of here within a short period of time.
I'm going to come down here.
Do we have to show you the same amount of respect we show everybody else that goes there? You know what you're in for.
She was so funny. Oh, my gosh, she brought in a pony. What has she got?
Yes, she is.
Oh. Oh, she has a new dog.
Yeah, look at this, it's Toast. And she's really a cute puppy, and she is a foundation dog. And so what I'm doing is, we, let me give you the updates for Ward 6, and I just want Toast to be around, so.
Anybody here need a dog?
Well, we're going to, we're going to show the dog on our channel, too. And look, if she sits nice, she gets a treat. So what I'm going to start doing, because we're so animal-friendly-
Wait a minute, is Toast a boy or a girl?
Toast is a girl. Let me tell you a little bit about Toast. This is Kelly. Kelly?
Is Toast spade?
Yes.
How old is?
We think she's about two years old. She was a stray. She came to us a little over a month ago.
Oh.
And she's lovely.
And when you say foundation, you mean the Animal Foundation? Thank you.
Yes, so what I'm implementing, along with everything else we do-
There she is.
Is, we are, Ward 6, and when we do our second and fourth Mondays over at the Y, we're going to ask that our Animal Foundation bring an animal over, and so we can put out on our social media to come by the Y and help us adopt these animals out, right? So we are going to take personal responsibility and help get some of these animals adopted out. I'm a big animal person.
How many animals do you have?
Right now, two here and three in California. So I have three horses in California and two dogs here.
Can we expect a horse coming next?
Yes, yes, we can. We can, absolutely. We, I run horses four times a week, because all my grandkids ride. So, so what we're going to do with Ward 6 is, we're going to implement, and we're going to partner up with the Animal Foundation and help them adopt their animals out. So this is Toast, and like Kelly was telling us, she's two, she's sweet, she is a mixed breed, and she's spade, and she's only $50. And I'll tell you what, if anyone sees Toast today, right, and they want to go to the Animal Foundation, I'll pay the $50, okay? So I'll pay the $50-
Wow. Everybody, are you listening out there?
If we can get Toast adopted out today, she's a beautiful dog. And then, we also have a little cat-
That's called, you have to call Ward 6 Councilwoman Fiori's office, and first come, first served. $50, this beautiful dog, this lady girl is yours.
Yeah, and that's Toast.
Today.
That's right. And then, we have Grayson, which is a cat. She's a domestic, short-haired cat. We have a picture of her as well. Oh, no, it's a male. It's a female, it's a male cat. She's three years old.
He.
He, he's three years old, and he's only $25. So both of these animals, if anyone that sees these animals up on the screen wants to adopt them, I would like to help you adopt them, and I will pick up that cost.
Today, only?
Today, yep.
Today.
So I want you to go down and get Toast and Grayson.
And what's your, what's the office number of your Ward 6 for Dan and Chance?
Yes, our phone number is Staff 702, my phone is up there, I press 1. I can't tell them to press 1.
Okay, anyway, it's 229-something.
Yes.
Just call City Hall, you'll get through. Ward 6.
Yep.
6405.
6405, 229-6405.
Perfect. And now, on Monday with Michelle, our next Monday is going to be November 13th. I have to tell you, our last Monday, I got visits from bunny rabbits, okay? So I had five people coming into my office with these tiny little bunnies that were helping get spade. So we're very animal-friendly. So Mondays with Michelle, November 13th, we'll ask for another foundation dog to come out and get adopted as well, and that's at Centennial Hills YMCA at 6601 North Buffalo Drive. We have a lot happening. This Saturday, myself and Councilman Stavros and Councilman Soroka is partnering up with our Las Vegas Metro Police for Partner for Safety over at the Clark County Shooting Complex, which is at 11357 North Decatur Boulevard, and we're going to be talking about safety. I know I'm having the NRA, Eddie the Eagle, come out and talk about gun safety for kids. And we have a lot, a lot happening there. And that's Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Clark County Shooting Complex. That's this Saturday. And then we also have shredding, everybody needs shredding, on November 18th at our YMCA on North Buffalo-
YMCA on North Buffalo, 6601, on November 18th from 10:00 to noon. And everyone can bring five boxes each. Then we have our Veterans Parade and me and Councilwoman Soroka will be riding on Big Red Saturday, November 11th. And then we have our Nellis Air Force Show Sunday. So we have a big agenda and again, I just want to let you guys see Toast. I don't know if the camera can see Toast, but I hope that they can. And just call my office at 702-229-5463. And Toast, there's Toast.
Thank you. Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I think you've heard everything, I'm going to be appearing at the Veterans Parade and at the Run for Veterans Village. We have a run at 8:30 in the morning in Symphony Park. Also tomorrow with the new library. So life is very good downtown, we're excited in all of Las Vegas. And I want to thank our marshals and our tech crew and all of our staff and Clerk's Office for everything that you do to keep us straight and going forward. Thank you very much. And when you get to your weekends, have a good, good one. And we are adjourned.
And Mayor, I just might add that we're also going to the cemeteries too.
Oh, yes.
The cemetery will be represented, I'm going to represent.
At the cemeteries and is it all this Saturday?
No, it's the 11ths.
It's not this Saturday, it's two weeks out.
Right, on the 11th.
We're not only there, we're at Palm, we're at all the, all the cemeteries. And I got confused, I thought, oh, my gosh, it's this Saturday, I can't believe it, I think I'm booked with too many things. So good, thank you for clarifying that. Anyway, thank you, staff. We're adjourned.